First is an update from Garfield Clean Energy. That they've done in the last year and this is one here.
We are a member of Garfield Clean Energy and make an annual contribution and have a seat on the board, currently filled by, which of you is it? Jess, okay, because I know you guys have tag teamed a little bit. Okay. Jess is currently our member. So thanks for doing that. And then we'll hear from Andrew and Ramsey and the team, the art space team about Carbondale Town Center, and then we'll talk about our own meeting protocols. So with that, I'll hand it over. Morgan and Jason, maybe you can introduce yourself. I'm not sure if everybody knows each other and we'll go from there.
Great, thanks. My name is Morgan Hill and I am the Associate Director at CLEAR Clean Energy Economy for the region. And we'll talk a little bit more about the relationship between CLEAR and GCE. And I oversee the Garfield Clean Energy Collaborative and manage the budget and board functions and all those things.
And I'm Jason White and I'm the current Chair for GCE and also the Assistant Planner at RAFTA.
And so you represent RAFTA in their membership on GCE, is that right, Jason?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Yep. And actually, Jason, do you want to start us off by talking about GCE structure and memberships?
So Garfield Clean Energy, it's a collaborative and it was purposely set up that way to work more efficiently and not have, you know, brick and mortar buildings and their own fleet and own staff. And so all the way back to 2009, it was set up very purposely to include all these different members from Garfield County. And as, so we currently have nine member governments that are members of the collaborative with an IGA, including Carbondale, so thank you. And over the years, we've also come up with the structure to bring in different entities, what we call kind of more affiliate members, including Holy Cross and Garfield County Libraries. And they, they come in at like a different level of membership, but I don't have to go into all those details tonight. And so as I, as I mentioned, this, this, the spirit of kind of the Garfield Clean Energy has started back in 09, but the, the current day existence of how it's structured goes back to about 2012. And that's when we became more of an actual collaborative with the IGA. And I already touched on Carbondale being a member for a very long time. And then also as part of doing the work for the collaborative, the CLEAR staff is actually contracted through an annual scope of work with the board to do, do the work. So they essentially are the staff members of Garfield Clean Energy.
Yeah, thanks, Jason. And one thing to highlight too is that we often hear from different community members, you know, they call CLEAR GCE and GCE CLEAR and, you know, in some ways we do try to clear up the difference between the two. But we also just want folks to access our services. So as long as our websites are linked, which they are, then we, you know, people are applying for rebates and receiving energy coaching. It doesn't want to go to the next slide. Okay, there we go. So, and I can maybe just cover this one. So the vision of Garfield Clean Energy, which was updated only just a couple of years ago, is that we will be an innovative leader in advancing energy efficiency, renewable energy and clean transportation or clean mobility to protect the environment and build a strong, resilient and diverse economy. And the economic development and diversification component of the work that we do is really important. And we believe that a lot of what we focus on with the energy efficiency renewables, clean transportation, also helps to drive that economic development. In addition to what we focus on, it's economic development in its own right. We updated our Energy Action Plan, or Garfield Clean Energy did, in 2023 is when it was completed. And that plan set out five goals that are also adopted by the town of Carbondale. And these are all that by 2030, we will achieve a 12% energy savings in the built environment, which 12% seems maybe kind of low, but it's actually fairly ambitious. It's going to take us a lot of work to get there. And we're, we're really trying everything we can to do that. And are also trying to grow the resources to expand those programs. We are also aiming for 100% carbon-free electricity by 2030. And a lot of this just comes from the fact that our utility mix is continuing to get cleaner and cleaner. We have three utilities in Garfield County and in Carbondale, it's Excel and Holy Cross. And Holy Cross is driving some very ambitious renewables goals and Excel is coming along as well. For clean mobility, we are aiming to have 15% of all registered vehicles EVs by 2030. And we're at about 2.2% right now, which is, you know, we still have a ways to go, but actually the curve of EV adoption is fairly steep, which is, we're really encouraged by that. We also want to increase multimodal transportation, so biking, walking, transit. And then really as a byproduct of achieving our other goals, we have, are aimed to have 100% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions from electricity and then a 10% reduction from natural gas. And Black Hills Energy was a stakeholder in the Energy Action Planning process, and so they had some input into shaping that goal as well. And then again, with the focus on clean energy, economic development and jobs, to really harness the economic benefits, but then also to address economic impacts. So some of what we're doing is working with the state and their Just Transitions Office to help add like oil and gas communities as opposed to just coal. So that's one measurable thing we're doing in that area. One of our flagship programs for the GCE does is our residential and commercial energy programs. So any resident or business or commercial property owner in Garfield County can contact us and receive free energy coaching. And I'll talk about, a little bit more about the difference between residential and commercial and how that works. But we focus on the biggest bang for the buck, energy saving measures. We also can provide, we provide a report for available rebates and other financing options. And we can also make some recommendations on appliances and we maintain contractor lists as well. And the picture in the top right is of a home in Carbondale, where GCE provided energy coaching for that residence and they did not qualify for our rebate programs. But we were still able to help them get the best information about making their home more efficient and rebates that are available through their utility and other ways. And then the bottom left is, this is a great example of highlighting the importance of energy coaching in new construction, which is, we love working with new construction because it's much easier to do, to implement these measures in the beginning. And this was a, the project we did down in the PG Commons, the Habitat for Humanity Housing Project down in Rifle. And then as part of our residential energy program, we operate the Reenergized Garfield County Program. And this is an income qualified residential energy efficiency program. It goes up to 150% of area median income. So this builds on top of the CARE Colorado Affordable Residential Energy Program. And WAP is the Weatherization Assistance Program, that's federal, and those only go up to 80% AMI. So recognizing that a lot of residents and families in Garfield County can't, you may make up to 150% AMI, but that doesn't mean you have a lot of extra money for making upgrades in your home. So this provides assistance in that, we just wrote an article that we called it "The Missing Middle" in terms of supporting their upgrades and then also reducing energy use. And that, the rebates we provide are tiered between $2,000 and $4,000. That's how we've structured it in 2024. And then most of the work in the residences is performed by the Energy Department of Northwest Cog. And projects can include, like we talked about Bang for, Bang for the Buck, we get a lot of questions about windows or solar, but you can save a lot of energy by some of these more simple insulation measures. So insulation and air sealing, pipe and duct wrapping. And then we do rebate heating and cooling system upgrades, but that would just cover like a portion of the cost because a heat pump for a home is obviously not less than $2,000. So we can just help cover some of the cost if, if a homeowner wants to do that. And we also can rebate lighting projects. This is a breakdown of the reenergized numbers. So Carbondale, we had a fair number of applicants, 31 residents in Carbondale and have spent, in 2022 and 23, we spent about $36,000 on rebates in Carbondale. And then this year was about $13,000. And if you'll notice, there's 31 homes qualified to date and yet the, you know, 31 homes in Rifle also qualified. We spent less money here. It really just depends on the income qualification. Again, because it's tiered, the more you make, then we would do more like the $2,000 amount. And sometimes the residents don't end up using all of the rebates depending on the work that's done. And then with that, we save Carbondale residents about $12,680 annually on their energy bills. And that's the average of the three years. So we've been operating this program. So a couple of reenergized stories from the field. We had a town home. The couple in the bottom right corner there lives up Four Mile Road and they had multiple upgrades. So some of those were rebated by reenergized, some were from the utility. And their annual energy savings is $1,600 a year. So that's over $100 a month, which can be pretty impactful for some of these families. There was another home that did duct insulation in a crawl space and their energy savings was about $800 a month. And then we had a mini split heat pump installation, and this was an example of one where we covered part of the cost. And that family is saving about $1,800 a month on, or a year on their energy bills. And this picture in the top left is, is what that insulation looks like, you know? So again, a lot of these upgrades go in the home and we're like, get more pictures. And they're like, well, you know, it's just an attic. So sometimes the point is that it's unseen, but again, it can be really impactful. And some more we're doing in the policy realm for energy savings. I mentioned that that 12% goal seems like it could be low, but is actually fairly ambitious. We're trying to go from about 120 homes per year that collectively between reenergized CARE and WAP are receiving these upgrades to about 600. So that's like a fivefold increase to meet that 12% goal. So we're just always looking for ways to grow the funding for, for this program. So we're looking, you know, again, at ways to increase that rebate funding at the county and regional level. We're also working with the Public Utilities Commission to improve access to rebates for rural Excel residents. And then we're also continuing to collaborate with the Colorado Energy Office and any of our representatives to help increase the resources they can provide. We throw this slide up there just in case anyone who's watching sees this and wants to contact us. We don't turn anyone away. Like I said, anyone can receive our free energy coaching services. And I think it's great to say actually that we ran out of reenergized money this year and just that the demand for that program is really high. But we keep a waitlist, so reach out to us and we'll, we'll get any families or residents on the docket for 2025. And also, we do cover renters. So some people think that because they're not a homeowner that they can't access reenergized. So just reach out to us and we'll get back to you. For our commercial program, we offer these energy coaching services for commercial property owners. We don't, GCE doesn't typically have a rebate pool specifically for commercial, but there's a lot of funds out there through utility providers and other financing options. And we make sure that we, we do a walkthrough and provide a report with that information. The picture in the top right corner, it just looks like the guy standing at the back of a building, but the HVAC upgrades on the roof are really what was important about that upgrade and really was a meaningful upgrade for that property owner. Then also, in the bottom right corner, just a couple of weeks ago, we hosted a, we called it a powering hospitality workshop for lodging in, in Garfield County. We had 11 hotels represented, which we felt like was a great turnout because if any of these hotels implement upgrades, it's a huge energy savings. So for commercial properties, there's obviously fewer of them, but when they do a lighting upgrade or an HVAC upgrade, it, it results in a big difference. And again, there's information if any commercial property owner wants to reach out to us and we're happy to help. And for energy code adoption and implementation, this year we had a grant from the Colorado Energy Office. We do this, provide this service anyway, but we had a little extra help again from, from the Energy Office to provide this coaching and support. And we did this for town of Carbondale and worked on your energy code adoption. And actually, I know we were slated to adopt that by the end of the year. So we're eager to, you know, have, have that in the books. And if you, at the end of the presentation, if you have any questions or, or updates for us, I'm happy to hear that. And we also worked with any other community in Garfield County that was adopting the 2021 International Energy Conservation Code. So that also included Glement Springs and Newcastle. Our team is also partnering with, in this regional net zero roadmap collaboration. So I've been representing Garfield Clean Energy on those meetings. And actually, Carbondale's been very progressive in that net zero roadmap and that effort. We've had some participation from other communities, but we are representing all of GCE there. We hosted a training series in May and June funded by that grant where, you know, it's, it's one of the reasons for that regional net zero roadmap is that our, our development in development industry, building industry works all up and down the valley, Garfield, Eagle and Picking Counties. And so when we hosted the train, these training series, we had Garfield County folks and then we also had developers and industry professionals as well as building officials from all over the area. Another service we provide through Garfield Clean Energy is the Advanced Energy Management Program. And just to make sure we're not going too long on time and because Christina is our expert in this area, I'll kind of breathe through these a little bit, but this program utilizes both monthly energy invoice data as well as, it's called IDR, interval data recordings, I think, for Carbondale facilities. And we are tracking 28 utility bills for 10 town of Carbondale buildings. And then something that we do for all GCE members is support recording the readings and portfolio manager for that, for benchmarking, which for most facilities around Garfield County, the state's requirement is buildings above 50,000 square feet. And I know that, I was just reviewing the Carbondale scope and the Carbondale's considering lowering that size because 50,000 square feet is very, is pretty big. And there would be a lot of buildings in between that. And we can support compliance in that area. And we could, you could also be considering Energy Star certification for buildings that score over 75. Here's just a chart of what your data looks like throughout the day. So we're tracking, making sure that for buildings that have that live, live data, that it's, you know, the HVAC is turning on when it's supposed, when it's occupied and not running when it's not. And we can help provide recommendation, recommendations on how to make those, sometimes they're super simple changes that can save a lot of energy. All right. And then for clean transportation, we, we break this out just like we saw, said with our goals. We have electrification and then that multimodal or more active transportation. So for EVs, we provide EV charging infrastructure grant assistance. A lot of that is through the Recharge Colorado Program. This year, we also completed a countywide, countywide EV readiness plan. And we're going to be really focusing on implementation of that plan in 2025. We also can provide grant assistance as part of Charge Ahead Colorado and some of these fast charging plazas. So there's a lot of different types of charging is probably a lot of you know. And we also want to make sure that our communities that are along major transportation corridors have some of these fast charging stations. We host EV ride and drives. And if you haven't been to one, we had one over here as part of First Fridays, I think it was in June. And I got to drive an EV at, at one of those and they're, they're, they are very smooth and fun to drive. And we also do try to have a bilingual component to those workshops. And then for our multimodal transportation, this year we did, it was our second year of an e-bike grant where we provided e-bikes to income qualified residents. So Carbondale had 15 e-bikes out of 50 that we provided around the county. And those are an ownership model, so the recipients got to receive the bike and, and have it for, they had to report data on their usage, but you know, it was, it's neat to be able to provide that. And then Jason, do you want to cover the bike there?
Sure.
And then partner with RAFTA?
So a component of these events was in collaboration with the state. I think it's just called the, the State Bike to Work Day. And I think the state has even tried to kind of change the name to just Bike Their Day or you don't necessarily need to be biking to and from work, just get on your bike and have fun. And so it happens in June and RAFTA has been collaborating with CLEAR and GCE on this for many years. And we have been holding it at DRL Park, which is a really great location because the BRT station, as you know, is right across the street. So we have like kind of a cool multimodal component just in visually, just being right there. And we set up a breakfast station, coffee. And this is also happening in other places like Glenwood and Basalt. So they're all happening at the same time. But this year was, was special because Dover was a really big part of a lot of the outreach of getting the libraries involved. So then not only was there the morning component for kind of morning commuters, but then there was also the afternoon more family when kids are getting out of school. And so the whole thing was a great success and RAFTA is happy to, to coordinate with this for, especially it being along the Rio Grande Trail. So.
Yep, thanks. All right. So for, we do a lot of events and outreach for Garfield Clean Energy as well. We tabled at Dandelion Days in 2023. We have to rotate a little bit, the, the festivals that we end up tabling at, just to be strategic. But we will continue to do those types of events in Carbondale. This year, we also did kind of a new iteration of our Winter Wise Energy Efficiency Campaign. And we had, I believe about 40 folks, 40 residents go through the energy coaching process with us. And that's a very, fairly intensive process where we end up spending, you know, a decent amount of time working with each residence. They get a home energy assessment and we help them work through their report. Then the assessment was mostly donated by the utilities as part of that event. But the marketing for that is, you know, takes a lot of time as well. We also do a monthly GCE newsletter, which hopefully most of you are on and seeing the GCE news and write a monthly post-independent column for GCE as well. This picture in the, kind of the center of the screen is, this was not necessarily a GCE event, but this highlights the fact that by contributing to GCE, you help to leverage a lot of resources that, that CLEAR and that the, the two entities combined can really provide for the community. This was a Thermal Energy Network workshop that we hosted at the Third Street Center about their Thermal Energy Network Project or TEN, it's kind of the new term for it. And in 2025, we're going to continue to grow residential and commercial energy programs and really try to increase those resources. That kind of ties in with that, that third bullet point of really optimizing state and federal resources that are flowing. We just are publishing an article in our newsletter that's coming out in the next couple of days about the state's new program for heat pumps. So we'll be, you know, there's, there's other funding. It doesn't all have to come from GCE, but we can help make sure that Carbondale, Garfield County residents are accessing those resources. But also continuing to grow our own funding pool through some of those policy mechanisms. I mean, I talked about the EV readiness plan and its implementation. We also want to continue to expand and enhance the Advanced Energy Management Coaching Program. So, you know, a lot of that is also the collaboration that we have with the facility managers. So just anything that we can be doing to encourage that, you know, the action step with the information that we provide. We want to do that for GCE members. And then we'll also be working on ongoing implementation of renewable energy projects. Again, focusing on those thermal energy networks as well, in addition to solar and ongoing economic diversification and workforce development. And that's it. Any questions for us?
Sure, we have some questions. And can you just remind us, I think one reason we, we're looking forward to an update is because our contribution level has increased pretty significantly this year. Can you just remind us where that's been and where it is now and any reasons behind that? And then we'll get into other questions.
Yeah, for sure. So the, the GCE contribution went up by about $2,000. So it went from, I think, $40,000 to $42,000, as I recall.
That's not a huge change.
So that was, that was more minimal. I know the, the bigger change was in the contract with CLEAR that has a lot of services that aren't included in GCE as well.
Great.
Yeah.
Other questions from the board, Colin?
Just, just to talk about funding a little bit, my understanding is Garfield County has reduced their amount to GCE too. So the, the, the ask here is, doesn't cover that, but it's an ongoing challenge. The county seems to think that they have no resources. So.
The county's contribution went down. They're decreasing most, I think it's all grants across the board by 10%.
Yeah.
So their contribution went from $350,000 to $315,000 between this year and next year. So we really appreciate that other, the other jurisdictions and members are kind of filling that gap to some extent. And Carbondale's, we asked every member to increase by five, between five and 10%. Some increased more than 5%. So it's, yeah, it's, it's really so great to be able to provide this resource to the whole county. And again, the collaborative nature of it really helps to leverage those resources.
Other questions, comments, feedback? This is kind of part of our budget update. This is what's in the budget, $42,000 for CLEAR and we heard from, or for GCE. I even wrote CLEAR here.
That's why I said it.
GCE and then we had separate funding for CLEAR.
This time it does, yeah.
Can I just say one thing? I just want to thank you for all that you're doing, Jason. Thank you for your leadership in GCE and the involvement of RAFTA. Like a lot of things, when they happen, when they've been around for a while, everybody starts taking them for granted. And what's really fantastic about GCE is it's one of the few collaboratives in the Western United States on these issues. We're very unique to have this collaborative. And it's also important because most Garfield County residents have to work with Excel. Excel is an investor-owned utility and it's one of the least progressive utilities in the country. We also have Glement Springs Municipality and Holy Cross, which are great, but most of the residents don't have advocates to work with the utility. And GCE plays a crucial, crucial role in doing that. And you mentioned the work they did with PC. So thanks for all that work because it's really important. I think a lot of us would love to all have Holy Cross as our provider, but we don't. And it's great to have a government collaborative that's pushing them to do the right thing. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up.
One thing I would add to that, Colin, is we obviously go and meet with the county, you know, every year to talk about their contribution. And Morgan did a great job, but we did a similar presentation very recently. And Tom Jankowski has been the representative on GCE for many years. And he almost single-handedly has kind of kept, kept them there. They are fully aware that the name of the county is in the name of the collaborative and that they, they do want to still support it. And they, they just are being very clear, as Morgan mentioned, that it's all across the board. On an upswing, any chance that Garfield Clean Energy has to advocate at the state level, we're always trying to kind of advocate for the fact that we're setting an example of what a clean energy district or something similar to that would be. And we always hesitate to talk about districts because then that sometimes spirals into like, oh, that's going to be more funding. The point being is that we're also always trying to work at the state level to try and bring more of the IRA money in, into the state. And so it is a multi-pronged approach for economic diversification.
Yep, thanks.
Anything else? Jess, anything you want to add as our new representative? Okay. Anything else? Christina? Okay, Chris, Ross, anything else?
Just, just to be clear, you mentioned that there were limits, limits to rebates or that, that had sort of run its course. The, the, it used to be audit, the energy audit, and now it's energy coaching? Is that, is that sort of a change in terminology? But, but those, those, those coachings are still available whether or not rebate dollars are limited?
Yes, absolutely. That's, that's always a service that we'll provide for residential and commercial.
Okay.
Yep.
Could you tell us just a little bit, Morgan, about the Net Zero Roadmap Collaborative? I, I saw one email about that and it, it was really interesting, this, the work that had been going on. And I can't remember how it even came our way or who all it went to, but it was like a, it was sort of a definition, like what do we mean by net zero? It really went deep into all those issues that we rarely have time to go deep into at these board meetings. And, you know, Carbondale's been trying to have this pathway to net zero for new construction and for existing construction and all that. But can you just tell us kind of where that is and how that, what the relationship is between that work and our work here that CLEAR is supporting us on at least with our pathway to net zero?
Sure. Well, it's actually a great time to be asking that question because the, the roadmap is essentially done and just wrapped up in the last week or so. And we could, I think, working with Jeff Dickinson, probably have a specific presentation about what that roadmap identified and, and talk about what their definition for net zero was. It made some changes to like the federal definition for net zero right now includes that the building has to generate as much energy as it consumes. And their definition was more, it was broader to include if your utility is 100% renewable essentially, that that could also be net zero. It adds a component of embodied carbon, carbon, so. It adds a component of embodied carbon, carbon, so construction materials. And then sets up a pathway with three tiers up to 2030 in terms of the different stages of what a community who truly adopts that roadmap could would be doing to get to that to that point. And, you know, as I understand it, you don't have to adopt the the whole road. You could. We have jurisdictions in in the Eagle and Roaring Fork Valleys that are considering that possibility. But I think it's it's useful just to consider as far as options for what could be included in a net zero roadmap. So there's, there's probably a lot to share and we've been part of several, we call them listen and learns that were for industry professionals and could talk about it for probably over an hour on its own. But yeah, so that that's been a really, again, a neat regional collaboration that just because we have our development community that, you know, works all around the three valleys to be able to give them a little bit more of a a uniform approach.
Yeah, I think it'd be good for us to learn more about that the next time that we're talking about our energy code. Maybe it's a few months out when we're looking at the next wave of energy code updates. But it's felt like we've had to kind of invent that pathway on our own and guess at some things and not always get it right. So I think we'd like to align to what's going on regionally and be as similar to what the other jurisdictions are doing as possible.
I think we had talked about maybe talking about energy and our net zero pathway to net zero and just getting on the same page like at our work session in maybe February.
Okay.
So we could maybe include at least that the roadmap in our materials, at least review. And maybe because I think Jeff did participate a lot as well. And I would assume he would be at that meeting, so maybe we could have a little bit of an overview of that.
Yeah.
That could be a good time to do it.
Yep.
Yeah, and we, like I said, I'm more interested in hearing what the town's schedule might be for adoption of the IECC, the International Energy Conservation Code and that 2021 code. I I guess I'll just be fully transparent. The grant that we received for that ends at the end of the year. And so our work, you know, we're we're supported up until December 31st on that one. So we understand that the town wants to adopt all the codes at once and that that's a benefit to all of the development community. But I'm just conveying that that's something that we're we're considering in terms of how that that grant is is structured. So if you have updates, just keep us in the loop or.
Looks like Lauren might have an update.
Okay, okay, great.
First of all, I'm under the impression that our portion of the grant was exhausted at least a couple of months ago. So that's what I'm getting from Jeff Dickinson. So if that's different, if you let me know, that'd be great.
It's a it's set up, they have a, I don't want to provide more detail than is helpful, but the way the state is structuring that grant is a reimbursement model that requires the deliverable to be accomplished, which is the adoption of the code. And so we're, this is about you all. It's not about us, but I am conveying that, you know, that grant is is has that deadline.
The we'll have a building code adoption update on December 3rd. And we are, we were hoping to get it done by by the end of December so that it would be effective in January, but we may be a couple of weeks behind that. So if that is an issue with the grant, we could talk about it offline.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
Great. All right, well, it looks like we don't have too many questions. I think you know that Carbondale has always been a big supporter of all this kind of work and we continue to rely on both GCE and CLEAR to move things forward for us and provide that expertise. So thank you for the update.
Yeah, thank you so much for having us. It's really great to be able to speak with all of you and continue to educate you on our programs and and reiterating what Mayor Bone Fox said, that it's Carbondale has been a really foundational member of GCE and we really appreciate your support.
All right. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Morgan.
All right, next item on our agenda is an update from Art Space Development Team. If if you all want to join us, you're welcome to. It's work session. It's doesn't have to be just Andrew here. We can pull a couple of chairs up. Your call, Bob, Amy Ramsey, wherever you want to be. But if you want to join Andrew, if you want to sit over on the side.
They remain at the ready. I don't know.
Yeah.
Never bothers me to have Ramsey sit next to me. I'm just going to join the Zoom quick and then I'll get some slides put up.
While Andrew's getting online, I'll just say that it's great to have you here in person. Flew in from Minneapolis, drove over Reval Pass to come see us and give an update today. Got a few new board members since our last update. I think, I can't remember if we've had an update in the past six months, maybe not in person. And, yeah, I think it's just important to kind of review the the history of this project and where we are and where we're headed. New Year's Eve will be three years since the property was donated to the town. But it took us a while to get the process started. Oh.
Always.
So while that is updating. Seriously, I've done this before.
If you have a desktop, you can just toggle it to the front. That's what I always do.
There you go. Ah, success. All right. So again, Andrew Michelson from Art Space Projects, thank you for allowing me to be here today. Some familiar faces and some new. My title is Vice President of Property Development at Art Space, but that essentially means I'm a project manager on our various real estate development projects across the country, including here in Carbondale. So I've been working very closely with Lauren and the team and Ramsey on the design side as well as others as we're, you know, envisioning what could occur at the town center. I did some Shret and then really got into some detailed work on how can we advance some of the affordable housing goals and development of that site. And so what I wanted to do today is to both for some of the new members of the Board of Trustees to just do a quick update on what we had planned, what we'd done with that work, where it's kind of brought us today and then, you know, some thoughts on where we can go forward from here and hopefully some guidance and some suggestions and questions from the board as we take that forward. So happy to take, of course, any questions, comments as they come up and we'll go through from there. So with Ramsey sitting next to me, I should say he and the team from Building Scene and JV de Souza Architecture led all of our design work and the Shret work on the site. And there's some photos, renderings here of what the result of that work was, which includes, although we're working on the totality of the town center site, we're really focused on two significant components of it, which is essentially all the frontage to log Sixth Street and then a portion of the site just south of the Thunder River Theater, which we call the Southwest Promenade. It's on the southwest side of the promenade. The image shown there is on that Southwest Promenade. So that shows a component of the proposed building that would have some commercial at grade fronting the promenade there as well as some housing on the two floors above that. And that is oriented on the site, as you can see here. Again, the totality of the the town center site, where we've broken it up in sort of the dark green, are the the components that we did advance with more thorough design and some future phases, we've marked as phase two, where some opportunities still exist, but we haven't spent as much time looking at those, but remain part of the overall concept for town center. Again, on Sixth Street, there would be another component, all residential, three floors, 33 units of housing, a mix of studios, ones, two and three bedroom units. And we've proposed affordability from 30% AMI to 60% AMI. And I'll talk a little bit more about some of the rationale behind the financing and what we were seeking there, some of our overall goals. We had also proposed some unrestricted units as far as tax credits are concerned as part of the project, but that would also be restricted for Carbondale's own local affordability guidelines, which go up to 150% of area median income, but exceed what's allowable under tax credits. So there's some subtleties there, but really looking to approach a broad swath of affordability within the project. So a lot of work went into the design. We'll get into all of that here, but you can see there's definitely some intentionality around the southern end of the site, being more close to the historic downtown core and then looking a little more single family residential as you get towards the north, closer here to Town Hall and then to the single family homes as you head further north from there. Just a different view of that same portion of the site from the opposite angle. So sort of looking to the south and east.
Looking to the south and east.
Yeah. And then this is again, just a different rendering of that Southwest Promenade portion of the site, looking from more in front of the Thunder River Theater down through the promenade to the site and then showing some of the planned activation of a pocket park and the activities we hope to support along the promenade there. And again, facing forward on the building on the Southwest Promenade side is showing more of that intended commercial development at that portion of the building. So again, two kind of real core components of the of the overall site as we propose on Sixth Street, all residential and then that Southwest Promenade side highlighted here, just in the dash blue, all the residential and then the dash black, the Southwest Promenade side, which I'll talk a little bit more as I walk through here. So that's a very quick update or introduction for those of you new to the project, which I think should be helpful as we sort of walk through the conversation this evening. So with this work that we did, we applied to the Colorado Housing Finance Authority or CHAFA in February of last year for low income housing tax credits for a competitive source of funding, which would be a significant capital component of actually getting the project built. It's a competitive source, statewide. We were not selected, which is frankly not unusual for a first time applicant. But we had an opportunity to put that application in, knowing that we might not be successful, but had all the components there we thought could make a full application, but knowing we'd get a lot of good feedback, even if not selected from CHAFA, about what we could do to be more successful on a subsequent application. And so diving right into that, there are really kind of, you know, four key components of that feedback from CHAFA coming out. And one related to the mix of commercial use and residential. Although CHAFA allows for that, there's nothing in the code that prevents that. They like to see frankly more clean deals that are either all residential or don't have commercial. We've Art Space has successfully developed mixed use, commercial and residential projects in Colorado with CHAFA and that's not a problem. But they did suggest finding a little more clarity in what tendency might be in that residential versus commercial and how to ensure that the two operate successfully, which is, you know, mild feedback generally, but something that we we definitely took to account. They did also address that the affordability of the the LITEC or the the tax credit restricted units, as we propose them, were either 30% AMI or essentially a very low income. And those units did have support from Garfield County Housing Authority with rental vouchers. So the affordability being very low, but the rents achievable for the project were actually a little bit greater, other than the bulk of the the rest of the units all being a 60% AMI. And a lot of that was driven by the way the CHAFA approaches tax credits, doesn't allow for a broader mix of affordability within units, which is called income averaging, which allows to go up to 80%. But if we're also including the unrestricted units, which was very important from what the feedback and the goals of the town, we couldn't include those in the application. So in order to still be able to put a valuable application in, we went to 30 and 60 to allow us and then have those other eight units that weren't restricted. And I mentioned that because that was also a feedback component from CHAFA. They wanted to see more affordability, not just 60 and 30, but if we can go higher to 80. And without telling us, they really wanted to see not the unrestricted units. And there, a lot of the feedback has said, if you can do that many units, we'd like to see them all restricted. Which is, again, it's sort of our purview to present as we'd like, but that's feedback from them about what they would like to see on the the approving side. But really, I think the 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 key component of the the CHAFA feedback is that although we had identified sources sufficient for the project as presented as far as dollars to to build it, we didn't have all those committed. There was about, you know, nine to 10 million of about a $34 million development that was not committed or didn't have a soft payment, but we had identified. And that was really, you know, I don't want to, you know, cause Lauren called it a red flag, but from CHAFA's standpoint, they said, you know, if we were to fund you and you don't get those dollars, you don't have a project, that's not what we would want to do. So really, the the most, I think, important feedback from CHAFA was go out and get that money or get a lot more of it committed and come back in. And so taking that to heart, a lot of the work that we've done since then is to look at not just the project as it is and how we might bring those dollars in, but how we could, you know, look at the project in different ways so that we can bring funding dollars in to make it viable, either as a tax credit development or as a homeownership component, which was not included previously. But are there opportunities to look at the work we've done without redrawing anything? So no architectural changes, but how can we still advance this project that's been received while we've gotten that feedback on? But bring dollars in in a way that, you know, funding agencies can say, you've got all your ducks in a row. Let's move that forward. So the good news is that, you know, I think there are a lot of opportunities to to seek out these sources and to bring some of these pieces in. We don't yet have those committed. And so I think really the roadmap in front of us now is going and chasing these dollars, not changing the work that we've done on the development to date, but saying the goal is there, let's get those dollars in. Tax credits can still very much be a component of that, but also look at what are some other ways that we can chase dollars, develop this project and take it forward. So I want to talk a little bit about some thoughts we've had there, some conversations. But before I dive too much more into that, I'll just pause for a moment and see if there's any questions. I know there's some really technical things I went over quickly there and not everyone's as seasoned in that, so.
Great, thanks for the pause.
When when you're in the CHAF application, the the grant request, are is that just for phase one or is that the whole entirety of the the project? How how does that work?
A great question. So it would be for, again, on the screen here, it would essentially the the dark green components, the two that are sort of dashing right there was all those, which is 40, 41 units of housing and about 2,000 square feet of of non-residential commercial space as well as the site improvements, the parking, landscaping and all of that. So really, phase one, nothing related to phase two. Okay. But great question. Any others? Chris?
Guess it was my recollection that we had sort of decided to punt on the south central lot and focus on just the 33 units on Sixth Street. Has that changed then and or is that still?
So that is something that I I want to walk through some of the conversation we had in exploring that. So no, we haven't punted on it, but we haven't found a clear path forward on just that component either.
Yeah. And so we're still dividing deciding on, I guess, maybe you'll get to this. I don't know if I'm getting too ahead of us, but we have yet to decide, I guess, whether we're going to put in an application just for Sixth Street or whether we're going to try to add any of that L to it, I guess, still. Or have we decided for the LITEC purposes, we're just going to stick with the pure residential side of things?
Yeah, so let's just dive right into that. So at this point, it's it's my really clear indication from CHAFA that we're not ready to put a successful application in. If we went in today without other dollars committed, we're going to get the same news we got before. If we're not changing architectural, there might be some different feedback on affordability, which are things we can we can change. But if we don't have the other dollars assembled, it doesn't matter what we put in, whether it's all six or the whole thing, we're going to get that same feedback. But knowing that, wanted to look at what are some other ways we might approach either Sixth Street on its own, Southwest Promenade on its own, or as a collective collaboration? And so one of the key components of the application we put to CHAFA is that it was the, what's called a 9% or the competitive tax credit. It's more lucrative, it's limited in its quantity, but it also generates more value. Even with that said, when you apply for the tax credits, it's they're generated, the the number of tax credits you get is based on the the value or the cost of the project you're proposing, but they cap that. So our project as proposed, you know, as 34ish million dollars, got to the 1.4 million annual cap of credits from CHAFA and then some. So if you think about it, we, you know, as our costs come up, we generate enough credits to get to a certain level. And then, you know, our our costs are always going to be more than that. But every dollar we we exceed of that, the cap doesn't move up at all. And so that And so that generates more and more gap. So one of the things that I did look at is there also is what's called the four percent tax credit, which is the same essential federal tax credit in the way that the the financing works. But it isn't limited. You can apply at any time of the year. It doesn't come with as many hooks from CHAFA and that they administer it, but really if you hit minimum federal thresholds, you're eligible for that credit. And one of the key reasons of looking at that is without getting too mathy here, the four percent is the number that's applied to that basis versus nine percent. So it generates typically fewer credits for the same kind of project. But just, you know, by happenstance, the math worked out that at a four percent, we would generate essentially the same amount of credits annually as that as a nine, because, you know, they stopped giving us credits when we reached a certain threshold. So I thought that was, you know, an interesting, you know, mathematical exercise. But that four percent credit requires that you also finance fifty percent or more of the project with taxes and bonds. We've done a lot of four percent tax credit projects at Art Space. It's a, you know, well established, it's been part of the the same program since its inception. In Colorado, the bulk of taxes and bonds flow through the state, through CHAFA and flow into what they have as a four percent plus a state tax credit, not the federal tax credit we're looking at here. But they'll take those bonds deploy them with the four percent credit and then pair them with the state credits to essentially make projects that look at and feel like a nine percent competitive still work as a four. But that essentially takes that bond cap and pushes it into a different competitive program still within CHAFA. So on its face, CHAFA is not necessarily an avenue to get that bond allocation. So I have had conversations with Garfield County. They do get annual bond allocation. They currently are supporting a project in Glenwood. But they only get about three point nine million annually. That would not be sufficient to meet the fifty percent requirement. So there are future conversations we have about either are there other bonds from other counties that might be pulled together? Is there a conversation with the state to make an application just for bonds to access that program, that four percent program without going for the state credits? The conversation with the state was that there's not really going to be much of any of those bonds left. It's a possibility. But as of today, you know, the bulk of the resources go in that direction, but it's still something we could explore. And that would keep essentially the project as a tax credit standalone deal. So that's an option that exists. We could still also take it in as a nine percent if we're, you know, bringing in the rest of the funding. Because even as a four versus a nine percent application, the gap is going to be the same. If not, you know, slightly larger on a four percent transaction. So that was one conversation I had. Again, this is not disheartening. This is just the reality of like, let's look at what opportunities exist out there. But another key avenue I wanted to explore is that some of the other feedback from CHAFA about the inability to mix the unrestricted units, which are still available at a hundred and fifty percent AMI locally, which is a goal of of Carmanale to have affordable housing at this higher level, but, you know, still restricted, but exceeds tax credit allowances. With that as a component, it made it a murkier project for CHAFA. So what if we explored cleaving that off and just doing, you know, maybe a tax credit deal with CHAFA and another component of the site, which we'd sort of immediately keyed into as the Southwest Promenade. They're on separate lots as drawn already, separate legal land, so you can develop a separate project on it, finance it separately, it's still part of that same collective vision. So among the things we've looked at there is those could be a separate standalone project, there's eight units there plus the commercial. Could those be developed as affordable rental at that higher level of a hundred and fifty percent AMI? Or might we also look at that as opportunities for homeownership in a condominium style development? So there's eight units that as drawn exist with the commercial there. And so one of the things that we haven't talked about here in front of the board, but I would really like some input on and if there if there exists some support to further explore is whether we take that Southwest Promenade and try and advance it independently as a separately financed homeownership model. And I say homeownership in that we would, in concept, take all eight of those units, make them individual condominiums, a single development that gets built, look to act and feel like a condo, as we sort of just generally refer to them, commercial on the first floor, separately owned. There would then exist opportunities for folks to, you know, own those outright, so establish homeownership, not single family, but still ownership. We could still restrict the affordability. So those who are eligible to apply could still be restricted in those ways. There are funding mechanisms through DOLA and through CHAFA that target that sort of development. It also might present, and I don't want to be too presumptuous here, but there has been conversations about the town's desire to have housing that it controls, either for municipal workers, teachers, or whoever, maybe. This would also potentially present an opportunity for the town to own and control some number of those units and either rent them out to, you know, so own them as the town and then rent them to, you know, qualifying affordable, you know, families and individuals. Or to sell them to qualifying, you know, municipal employees or whatever that may look like. A variety of things we could explore there. I haven't gone too far down that road because I wanted to have this conversation. But I have looked at it enough to say DOLA Housing Side does have programs specifically targeted towards creating homeownership opportunities. There are smaller project pools of funds available through CHAFA and through DOLA. So if you have twenty or fewer units, they have a separate pot of money. We might be able to seek both for construction debt and permanent financing. And I think there might be a lot of, you know, opportunities there to advance that portion perhaps more quickly and with a different sort of focus, homeownership versus rental. And, you know, again, wanted to come in, give this update that we've done some exploration, but not go too far down that road without having opportunity to discuss that. So that's a lot. I've kind of touched on there and I've seen some heads nodding and I'm hoping I'm not going too completely glazing over. But that, I think, that Southwest Promenade in particular has sort of spurred that. But there's also potential, and I was talking with Lauren earlier, maybe we cross over the promenade and look at could that be a larger project with some homeownership opportunities? We had previously talked with Habitat of the Roaring Fork. They continue to be interested in opportunities to create affordable homeownership opportunities. The commercial component at first floor of the promenade has really been the the linchpin kind of holding both art spaces and other conversations about development of that until there's, you know, significant tenant or tenants that can, you know, occupy that commercial component. It it raises more questions about viability of going above that with other units, but it's certainly something we could explore. But I don't want to go too far down one road or the other, again, without, you know, presenting some of the the research we've done, some opportunities here and getting some feedback. What I'd really like to do is look at and, you know, put a plan together and put some applications in. There are opportunities coming up mostly after the first of the year through through DOLA and CHAFA specific to homeownership for smaller scale rental and for Proposition one twenty three, both for rental and homeownership. So there are still some opportunities coming up that we could, if we craft the project appropriately, you know, put some applications in and that could also then strengthen a subsequent application to CHAFA for a tax credit component. So we could look at some of those funding sources on two components of the same development overall, excuse me, and try and get some momentum there. So that is a lot of what I've been up to in the last few months. But before we, you know, go too far into questions and comments on that, I also just want to, you know, formally say again, some of you hearing this first time, some are maybe, you know, hearing it the third or eighth time. It's really, really common to A, not be funded, your first application to CHAFA. So that wasn't a surprise. It's also very common when we're developing a project of this size, and this is not, you know, frankly, a large project for art space. I mean, forty, fifty units is kind of right in the typical sweet spot that we do. These projects can take three to five years easily, just when you're looking at concept, development, funding and getting them moving forward. So we're still right in that window. So I don't want folks to be disheartened. I don't want to, you know, be sowing sunshine either. The work is there. And this is, you know, the roads can be bumpy, but this is a pretty typical road for where we are. Maybe not moving as fast as folks would like, but the work is being done. So that is a lot. I just wanted to look at notes here quick and make sure I didn't miss anything. And then I'm sure there'll be questions or comments. So I'll just pause there.
Great. Let's let's dive in. I mean, it sounds like there's a few items there. One is the the next phase of funding for the Sixth Street residential only. Another is this concept of a homeownership opportunity on the Southwest Promenade. And then I think we haven't talked about commercial really, but maybe let's hold that. And we haven't talked about kind of phase two at all. So let's talk about these phase one items here. Questions, feedback, anything? Yeah, just.
What is your experience with homeownership projects like this with construction defect claims that come up when a municipality builds homeownership and then sells them and then you end up with construction defect claims?
Yeah. So a fair question. I will admit that we have never, in my, my knowledge, developed a project homeownership wise that a municipality has then owned the units. But we have developed a handful of for sale affordable projects where we built them, either as a townhome or standalone, single family, qualified household buys them and off they go. So a lot of that comes down to the the structure of your your GC contract, who's actually constructing them and where the liability attaches and it's different state by state. And then, you know, what your inspections and your conveyance to the actual homeowner looks like. So we just did a very similar project to, you know, what we just kind of talked through in concept here in Maryland two years ago, I want to say. So there's about a fifty, sixty unit affordable housing component and then eleven unit townhome for sale project that was developed on an adjacent lot, again, cleaved off, sold to households. We didn't encounter any issues with warranty claims and the like with those units, but I know it's a concern that's out there. So that would be something we definitely want to look into more closely to ensure that from a Colorado law standpoint, what we need to have in place and warranties and the like. But I would envision that to the extent there are any of those warranty or defect claims, the town wouldn't be the developer. It would be art spaces developer then conveying these units. So to the extent there's claims, it would be to us as the art space developer and guarantor to write those and then downstream from that from us both through any insurance or things we'd have to have in place in the general contractor.
You said you wanted to hold off on the discussion of commercial element?
I mean, I'd like to just make sure we really understand all this. It was just laid out because we haven't touched commercial and then let's dive into that.
So I'll just, so so it's your opinion that we should not apply in this coming January for that Sixth Street portion at this point?
To CHAFA, yes. I I I'm quite certain we're going to get the same indication. We'd spend, you know, somewhere on the order of probably thirty, forty thousand dollars to put an application together and send it in just to hear no again. So I think our our efforts are better spent in addressing the concerns that have already been presented, which is find the other dollars and bring them in. And, you know, in particular, Prop one, Prop one twenty three existed at the time we applied last year, but it wasn't operationalized yet. That's not the case now. So we have an opportunity to apply in either or both of these schemas to secure those dollars or other programmatic dollars so that we strengthen our application and take that forward. But as of today, without those commitments in hand or at least a soft commitment, I think we're just going to get the same response from CHAFA.
This is a dumb question. What is Prop one twenty three?
Do you want to explain it?
Questions?
I will do my best. So Proposition one twenty three is a law that was passed, I want to say, two sessions ago that directed funding from the state specific to affordability in rental and homeownership and essentially those funds are flowing from the state both through CHAFA as well as through the Department of Local Affairs or DOLA. They take a couple of different forms. They have loans available. They have grants available and they have equity components. So there's a opportunity for essentially investment income or, excuse me, investment capital to be provided by the state into a project instead of through a private industry. And that is sort of all lumped into what's referred to as Prop one twenty three.
It's an opt-in program through the state and as part of that opt-in, which we have done, we make a commitment to grow our affordable housing stock by a certain percentage every year.
Yeah, that
And that makes us eligible for some of these extra dollars.
Yeah, that's a great point. Communities have to opt in to be eligible to receive that funding, whether it's through private development or through direct municipal development.
Other questions? Erica DeJeff's name?
I guess along those lines, is it, and I don't, I don't know enough about it either. Where are people using the Prop one, two, three funding to fund a whole project? Or is it like it's providing those matching funds or those gap funding for like a CHAFA tax credit credit project? Or do you know?
The projects I have seen and admittedly, the last conversation I had, a lot of these have been funded, but not yet completed or taken forward to construction. But they're essentially either gap or or funding that gets stacked together with other sources. Not a standalone, single source for a project.
Yeah. So it's kind of exactly what we're looking for to go back to CHAFA with a strong application.
Yeah. And they're looking to leverage those Prop one twenty three dollars with others so that, you know, it's not a single source funding anyone thing, but you're you're bringing as many things together. And it's also very common. I mean, these projects, you know, across the country oftentimes have five, six, seven, eight. We just closed a deal in Minneapolis, had a twenty three different sources of funding. So I mean, you're, I'm not suggesting we do that. But, you know, a lot of times these programs have very specific things they will fund and others they won't, or you'll qualify as this. You know, so there it's it's very common to to have a capital stack that has a variety of these sources, but the bulk of them will have some affordability component as as a programmatic requirement.
So thank you for the presentation, the update and the the next steps. I'm fully supportive of kind of saying, please run the numbers, go into more detail. I think Lytec was always going to be a bit of a stretch because of the size of the project. And, you know, you can get eighty units, a hundred units someplace else. So I think this is wise for us to think creatively, potentially get one, two, three money. So I'm fully supportive of letting these guys go. Habitat has a neat project in Glenwood Springs where they've bought a rental apartment and they're kind of minimizing it and selling it to their units. So this wouldn't be that different for them to do. So I think it's worth exploring how we could play a role with them. I I understand the commercial could be challenging. I think that might be a role for us. We might have to do that. If we want commercial, I don't know that we're going to get commercial buy-in from investors to do it. So it could be that we're the upfront money in some shape or form. Not sure what that looks like, but it's, I think we should put it on the table and see. Because we're the ones that ultimately want that. Or else we should get it out of the code, right? If we don't want it. Because that's why, that's what it's zoned for. But I think we should put all those things on the table. I also think that it's also worth thinking about phase two now. We're going to run into the same problem that we are in now where where's money going to come from? And phase two probably looks a lot like the South, you know, East Promenade. Maybe not, but my sense is there's commercial on both sides. So why not? Why not? And sometimes it works that bigger is better. Especially economies of scale. And I know I has brought up before that just mobilizing on a construction size, if we're doing the whole project at once, I know that's a big lift. But doing it twice could be even more challenging. So I I'm really excited about what you've presented. I'd love to see more. I know there's a lot of work involved in doing this. Affordable housing is really hard. It just is. Our system's not set up to do it. So our state's trying, but one, two, three only has thirty million in it. So, you know, it's only going to go so far. But I really think this is the direction we should go and I fully support it.
So thank you for the support again. Two things I didn't touch on, I think, is again helpful, although it's shown as phase two here just north of the Thunder River Theater. That is probably its own phase, kind of, maybe it's part and parcel of phase two more broadly, but that is intended to include the Thunder River Theater expansion. So we always knew that their desire to expand into, you know, they're in the middle of the site. That might be a standalone piece that we can't necessarily tie into. I know they're, they've got some designs they're working through and they want to fundraise for that. That might be a standalone component, but it is shown as phase two, maybe just as a future phase. So I wanted to make that clear again, for some folks who might be seeing this for the first time. And another thing that I talked with Lauren earlier today and on some other occasions is because it is a town owned site, the entirety of it, and the the land is going to remain town owned, even, you know, with an art space development above that. There are opportunities to apply to DOLA local government for infrastructure fund. DOLA local government for infrastructure funding. Um, some of the pots of money that um, were deployed in the last year or two were specifically available for uh, putting infrastructure in that supports affordable housing. So among the things that I think we should continue to look at is, are there um, local government funds for infrastructure that the town could advance an application for? That upgrades maybe infrastructure for the entire site so that we're not digging it up later. To the extent we need to upsize, you know, water, you know, uh, connections or sewer, whatever those things may look like, that will be something, I think, regardless of how it ends up getting phased, would have benefit. And also some of those dollars for infrastructure and site improvements were part of our, our tax credit application. If it's town-owned and paid from a different source, it reduces that gap. So that's among the things out there. I did touch on that before, but I want to make sure I mention that too.
I guess for me, the crux of the issue is like, do we still? Like, does the added complexity of say the Southwest Promenade pay off in terms of added grant opportunities for it? I feel like we need to kind of make a decision about, like, are we going to try to fo- sharpen our focus on the Sixth Street? Side of things and try to push that project? Or do we want to try to juggle these two things at the same time? Or do they mash together? And I guess that seems to be the question before us. And I don't know. I don't feel like you've like come with a clear opinion on that. I don't know if you have a.
I haven't shared my opinion because I kind of wanted to, you know, put information out there, but um, I will say, I think that probably the clearest path here is to cleave off smaller, more digestible chunks. And not have them all tied together. The, the site being divided up with smaller lots, I think presents these opportunities to do things that we couldn't do in the larger development. So more directly, I think if we were going to look at the Southwest Promenade component, either as a small project funded it uh, as, you know, um, affordable rental or as homeownership, that is something we could do. We could also then do the Sixth Street as a standalone application. We could do Southwest Promenade and maybe a portion or all of the other side of the promenade. You know, Ramsey's sitting here with me. We haven't drawn that side yet, so there would be a design component of that. And Colin, I, I appreciate your comments about the commercial piece being, you know, something that we should visit on more. That really kind of has been the sticking point is we haven't done more work there because if it's a code requirement, that's a lot of square footage and investors essentially say, count zero for your income on that because it's speculative from their standpoint. But we know you need it because you're putting housing above it. So it's really critical to anything that goes above. But, you know, happy to do it. But, you know, Chris, to, to your point, I think we can focus on the Southwest Promenade. I think there's some real and, and upcoming soon applications that we wouldn't really need to redraw much. It's about how do we characterize those? I think the thing that we really didn't address as part of our initial development was homeownership. And that was something that was always brought up in these conversations. This might be an opportunity to bring that in and it might just be that first foot through the door. I would really like to explore that. We can still advance applications for gap financing for the thirty-some-odd units on Sixth Street with an intention of going back in for nine percents for uh, fours for states and fours. As those dollars come together, still look at DOLA local government to bring in infrastructure dollars to advance that and you know, there, there's a lot of further things we can do to refine that. But I think that as drawn, using the work we've already done, would allow a lot of opportunities to, to get dollars in without changing a lot of what's been presented. But addressing differently the affordability and how that actually would play out long term. So that would be, I think, my indication of the strongest, you know, movement forward with what we have drawn today. But again, I didn't want to go too far afield and come back and say, here's what we're doing. What do you think?
Thanks, Andrew. Jess?
What's the timeline? So if we are, let's just say we cleave off the Sixth Street project and we're working on this gap funding and we're not applying for Chaffa in January or whenever it happens next in twenty twenty-five. Does that mean we're not applying again until twenty twenty-six? And then we're another year before we can even apply again?
Um, the nine percent competitive round is annually in January, February. So if we go the nine percent route, yes. We would be waiting, you know, till twenty-six for another application there. Well, we could use twenty twenty-five to apply for and hopefully secure the bulk of or some significant portion of the gap funds that did not exist previously to strengthen a future application. We still would also have an opportunity to take that same project and we could apply in, I think it's usually around August for the state and four program. Again, it's through Chaffa that essentially makes it a competitive project. We wouldn't need to change architecturally anything. If we had some other gap sources attached to the project, we could apply then. So there's, there's a couple of different bites at the apple that we can go forward there. But, you know, I think, you know, as, as Colin said, that affordable housing is difficult. You know, this is not a pejorative, but it's very expensive to build, particularly in this valley. And that cost has to be addressed through sources that, you know, pushes past that cap and happy to do, lean into the work and now is the time to sort of pull the dollars in, but.
In, in, in theory, we're looking at two more years of getting the funding. And then construction wouldn't start for until twenty twenty-seven at the earliest.
Uh, that's probably, I mean, again, if you're thinking about as a tax credit application on that timeline, that's probably about right. But again, if we're looking at other components of it, and I'll again just point to, you know, the Southwest Promenade as I thought about it. There are three different potential applications coming up after the first of the year through DOLA. Prop one twenty-three, uh, DOLA funds, homeownership and rental opportunities, as well as other Chaffa opportunities for small project funding that aren't tied to that long, you know, annual cycle. So we could be looking at other components of the project, potentially move those forward on a different timeline, uh, hopefully a quicker timeline than waiting annually. But that, that is part of the rub with tax credits is it's essentially once a year. And once you're awarded, then there's a closing process and then you're starting construction. So that, that filters into that three to five-year timeline I talked about earlier and it's, you know. Our first project in Colorado in Loveland, we applied three times. We refunded the third time, we brought online. Now it's been operating, I think, since twenty fourteen and it's doing wonderfully. So it's really not uncommon, but it does start to seem like a very long time, particularly when you can't see things advancing in a tangible way, which is also part of why I want to look at what can we do outside of tax credit elsewhere on the site without recreating the wheel?
Okay.
Um, we have talked a bit because we have a lot of projects on our docket. A municipal finance workshop that explores what our options are. We have done reasonably well on the sales tax component uh, since, since COVID uh, with Amazon sales and people buy locally and we have a new city market and we have a lumberyard and we also have for us a very healthy reserve. I wonder if it's worth exploring what we could do as a town to finance some of this and get to the committed funding that, that everybody seems to want. Basal did not uh, ask a task increase, but they bonded on their current revenues and generated eighteen million dollars that they used to redo their Midland. And also six million that they're going to put into affordable housing projects, uh, some which they're involved with uh, out in Willets. Their rugby field. I think we should have that conversation. Whether we can do it or not, I'm not sure. I don't know the answer to that question. Uh, but uh, if we really want to see something happen on that site, I think we have to play a bigger role in making it happen unless we sell it. Right? Just sell it to someone.
Please don't.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, if, if, I don't know that we can ever get to a si- scenario where we're not putting anything in other than the land. I just don't know how that's going to work. So I think it's worth the conversation, whether this board agrees with the solution or, or how we approach it is another question. But I don't think we even know what our options are at this point. It'd be great if you could help us with that uh, as you're exploring these other options, because I think it's a, it's a critical question. What's our role?
I, I'd be happy to participate in that uh, for certain and uh, appreciate your, your offering that. Uh, I have not I'm thinking here on the spot. I've not participated in a project where there was a municipal ownership and financing component of that nature. But I know that plenty municipalities bond for or develop or own outright their own projects. So happy to explore that. I know that there are probably folks at the state who could help us have that conversation. And I will say though, I would expect that if that were part of the financing, there's going to have to be a municipal ownership component of it. And I expect that that would immediately create a, 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 just a programmatic conflict with tax credit development because it has to be a taxable entity that's essentially third-party investor to allow the tax credits to work. So that would change the nature of maybe some component of it, but I'm absolutely happy to have the conversation.
You talked about, we can karma compartmentalize the different components. So that section above uh, to the north of uh, Thunder River, maybe that's the one we work on as a town, because that might be a little more challenging. And who knows, if Thunder River is going to be able to do that by, by themselves. So I just, I just throw that out. I'm just speaking as one person, but I think that is, that's a, a, a question that, that would be really helpful to know. So we can, we, we don't leave anything, any option uh, unexplored.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the sentiment and, you know, I think that that is exactly the kind of attitude that's going to allow a project like this to move forward. Is, you know, a recognition that, you know, there are a lot of sources out there, but if you got to play within everyone else's box, you're oftentimes not driving it yourselves. Um, and art space, you know, we, we are willing to do what this community needs and wants. We have a skill set we brought. And when there's something new, we're happy to explore and, and help understand that collectively with you. So happy to do that. Um, I would suggest perhaps I connect with Lauren and see what might be the best avenue to bring in someone who can advise on that side of thing. Municipal finance is not something I'm terribly well familiar with.
We're already putting that together um, through some of our um, bigger agencies and organizations that deal with municipalities in the state, CML being one of them.
But I want to make sure you guys are part of that because it's all connected.
Be happy to.
Yeah, I guess I would be curious to see both the, the municipal financing side of it and then also kind of I, I mean, maybe there's a bazillion different combinations there, but like, yeah, what is the other private financing sides of it? And I don't know, do you know anything about, what is it, tax increment financing? Are you familiar? What is, I don't even know what that is really, but can you give us?
Well, I, I know it's not that late in the evening, but if we start talking tax increment, we might all go to sleep. Uh, but uh, tax increment is something that um, we've deployed in a number of our projects. And without getting too deep into details, essentially what you do is you look at, you know, what is the, the tax level of a, of a piece of land or abilities that currently exist? Call it zero, right? If you then develop something that's taxable and it, you know, now generates fifty thousand dollars annually in, in real estate taxes, what do you, what do you do is you, you say that increment, that fifty thousand dollars that's going to be coming in each year? Borrow against that, bring dollars in now that's paid for going forward. It's essentially like taking a loan out against future tax collections. That is not something frankly, we've done in Colorado because affordable housing projects are statutorily eligible to be exempt from taxes. To make them better operating and to, you know, ease development. Um, but if you have a, a for-profit component or a different component, that's absolutely something that can be looked at. And again, you know, for municipal finance, that's a pretty standard and often deployed vehicle for, for funding affordable housing projects and others.
Okay, Erica, you've been waiting a while.
Um, I was just going to say, I appreciate you weighing in with your opinion because I think you've thought a lot more about this than um, uh, I certainly have. Um, so I really, I think the approach of carving off the Southwest Promenade section as like a smaller piece that we move forward and get some grants submitted at the beginning of the year, sounds like a really good approach. And if we're in the meantime, applying for DOLA funds from us for the infrastructure on the entirety of that lot would be great. And it would show that we're getting stuff done, but it sounds like that would leverage a lot of funding later because we'd be able to show that we have that done and not have to wrap it up in future other building costs, if I'm correct, and understanding that. So to me, that sounds really like a, an easy step for us to do now so that we're not just like putting the whole project on hold and waiting for to find the funding and then applying for nine percent and crossing our fingers and hoping for that um, in February of twenty twenty-six. But that's just me, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's like a threshold question. So I feel like last time we talked about this once, we had not, when we had not gotten the um, Lytech funding, we did give direction to look at these two as two separate projects and to just work on Sixth Street as a standalone Lytech project. So is the shift now getting our support for an ownership concept on the Southwest Promenade?
Uh, that, that is definitely something new that we hadn't touched on and more broadly than that, it being sort of separate, but potentially also including other sides of the promenade. And, you know, as Colin just said, maybe looking at commercial components that too. That wasn't something I was exploring, but having done some of these further conversations about what is out there and, and wanting to come back and say, I think there's an avenue here, but it changes the timeline and potentially the nature of Sixth Street. You know, I wasn't suggesting recombining them because we did have that conversation. But I think really just like, the lay of the land is a bit different, but I think there's some opportunities there, so.
Well, anybody have concerns about moving forward with an ownership model on that? And when we say Southwest Promenade, again, this is like the, the number seven sort of shaped there, upside down L. And I would think that that's where the town could play a strong role in helping finance it. Because we would want to own some units there for our employee housing strategy. And then they wouldn't be restricted. We could restrict them however we want.
Sorry, Ben, they're, they're pretty great ownership opportunities because they're a little bit larger than your typical um, apartment. Uh, for, you know, uh, tax credit job. Uh, they're, the, the floor plate was a little larger, so they're a little more spacious. They could be rearranged at two or three bedrooms or kind of family-sized units. So it's kind of a nice place. What's that?
Eight, there's eight, yeah. So it's, yeah, that's relatively small.
And then, but the, you know, the other thing I wanted to say is that, um, uh, yeah, obviously two tracks is a great way to approach this thing. One track being the thirty-one to thirty-three units on the Lytech, the four, the nine percent job. And then some alternate method for the Southwest Promenade. But if the numbers come back and speak to us that, you know, actually we should have more building area to make that more ideal and optimal and to get more done at once while we're disrupting the middle of the town. Obviously, that might include, you know, some other portion, what portion that is, who knows, right? But I think it's pretty easy to say that there's already a design to take a first stab at it um, on that. And it is a really great ownership opportunity, which is something that kind of was, everyone was sad about with the first round with how we had to apply for Lytech.
Yeah, and we'd probably needed to follow our affordable housing guidelines that, you know, they'd go through the sequence of units and all that, but they wouldn't all have to fall under that. So some would just be probably free market or not free market, but available to the general public under those guidelines. And then others could be owned by an institution like the town or we could set them at a hundred and fifty percent AMI like everything in Thompson Park. The RVR Affordable Housing Neighborhood, which meets a, a real great missing middle need that we don't see that often. Um, I see a lot of want, people wanting to talk, so I'll stop. Um, Jess?
I just would, I just would say that if, if the town is wanting to go down this ownership path. I don't think the town wants to be the developer.
No.
So it would have to, the only way I would feel comfortable with it is if art space takes on that liability.
Yeah, I think the only thing we're talking about here is this is, this is still the development team. And we would just be financing a certain percentage of it and purchasing a certain number of those units and holding them for our staff. And the rest would be whatever scheme they come up with, what they need to sell for to make it pencil.
Yeah, so exactly to that point, I agree. What I was envisioning is, you know, art space, so facilitating a development of this building and we're going to price it, have to understand what dollars are available, what restrictions we can, you know, include on those to, you know, avail ourselves of various programs. But yes, the concept I think would be develop a condominium building with individual units and with a town funding commitment, then we could say to other funders, they are bringing in X dollars and commensurately they will then own X number of units. Um, I will just say, um, and this is a little bit cart before the horse, but depending on what programmatic your sources come in and what restrictions apply, will need to be careful about which units are restricted and which are not. And if there's an intent to have any sort of location or, or employment-based restrictions on those. I know that they can create problems if they're sort of tied together incorrectly, but if it is just free market, for example, and the town just bought one arms-length and we're not funding it with that program, then it would, you know, relieve some of that. Happy to do that modeling. And I think what I'm also hearing, and again, it's, you know, it's numbers on paper, but I would explore also. Uh, if the small funding project, funds that are available are like twenty units or fewer. If we're eight on this side, and we could just, you know, no offense to Ramsey, but copy and paste that eight units on the other side. If we'd be looking at sixteen, we'd be below twenty, maybe we're looking at both sides of that promenade, which we're gonna have to tear up to, to build the one. Maybe it's just a portion of that, that's numbers on paper. I'm happy to do that work too. But that would be something I think I wanna, you know, lean into a little bit, get some numbers put to and then come back and say, here are what the opportunities are. And that is not to say if you can't do a building, you couldn't lease those units. There would be questions we'd have to come back to long-term, who's owning that, whether it's Art Space's owner of all of them. Or, you know, I know there's been expressed sort of generally employers in the community having a desire to have units they own in control and maybe make available to the units or to their employees. This might present an opportunity there as well. So I feel very comfortable from what you're saying tonight, to do some work and explore that further, um, and come back. But also really be keyed into trying to avail ourselves of some of these applications that are coming up in the first part, first, uh, uh, first and second quarter of next year. For that piece, while we're also then chasing dollars, because I don't wanna lose sight of the fact that we have the whole town center development. We, of the forty-one units we were proposing, barely scratching the surface of the need. I don't wanna lose sight of wanting to do the entire site and bringing all of these units together. But it's gonna take, you know, rolling up some sleeves and looking at it and didn't, again, didn't wanna go too far afield without coming in, availing you of the conversation we had. And, uh, laying out what I think are some paths forward, so.
Okay, let's just keep going around. Christina, you had your hand for a while. Did you have something?
No.
Okay, Erica, you good?
No, I mean, I was just gonna, I hadn't mentioned the ownership component. I was just gonna remind the group that that was a high priority from the beginning of figuring out an ownership component. But we knew it was always gonna be, uh, it was just outside the normal model for affordable housing. Um, and Art Space was the only developer who came to us willing to explore that option. So thank you for following up on that part, but just, it's really, um, I think our community would be really excited about having some downtown ownership units. Um, added to our whole affordable housing portfolio, so I'm super excited about this.
Okay, Chris.
Um, do you think there's any risk that, um, going for this, you know, Southwest Promenade project would conceivably like cannibalize gap funding for, for the Lytec side of it? Um, is that a?
Um, fair question. Um, from what I've looked at, most of these programs, either CHAF or DOLA, they're really segmented, so they fund either homeownership or rental, not both. So I don't think there'd be any cannibalizing there, perhaps with some of the Prop one-twenty-three or maybe some of the, if we were successful with some DOLA uh, infrastructure funding, but again, with the town owning all of it, if you're saying we want to deploy infrastructure that's going to benefit affordable housing generally. If it's homeownership or rental, I don't see cannibalization there, but that would definitely be something we wanna look at. We also don't wanna be applying for two things at once and saying, we're only gonna fund one of them. So, um, I'll, I'll wanna continue to explore those sort of subtleties, but they, they tend to be different rounds, different pots of money at each time for either rental or homeownership, not the same dollars and not the same project.
And have you ever seen, like, um, I guess, thinking, thinking back to the commercial side of things, have you ever seen a project where like, say, we maybe are stacking the, like, maybe that commercial property on the ground floor also controls the housing above it in some manner, so maybe there's some stipulation requiring an affordable unit, but there's also a room there potentially for like a business to buy like the right to a whole, you know, maybe it's a, you know, kind of a rowhouse situation where they've got their business space on the ground floor. They've got a employee unit on the second floor and the business owner lives on the third floor or something like that. I don't know if that's a, something you've seen or if there's like a model there.
I have, um, the, the gentleman I spoke with at Division of Housing, when I was talking generally about, you know, what are some opportunities for, uh, homeownership dollars? They have specific, um, employer types that they like to see housing and employment tied to. The one that he highlighted primarily was daycare and I know it's something we talked about very broadly here, um, uh, in various conversations. And, you know, the, the site as drawn with the two thousand square feet wasn't intended to be daycare. We do have a, a letter of intent we executed with Carbondale Arts where they wanted to activate all of that. So sure, I mean, it's a complicated answer, but yes, I think there's some opportunities. You can tie things together that might bring some opportunities, might bring some complication. But also more broadly, live-work style units, um, where you see a business with a residential unit tied to it above. We saw a lot of that development, probably, you know, sort of mid-nineties, early two thousands. And I saw the bulk of those developed, Art Space didn't do that style. We've always sort of done a blend of you can live and work within your units, not separate things. You couldn't have commercial in that. If you wanted commercial, you'd say lease a separate commercial space. Because the problem becomes, well, what if someone's, you know, they go out of business, but they still need the housing? How do you cleave those apart later or now they don't qualify for the housing because of the income thing, but they still have the business? Something we can absolutely look at, but I've seen most things looking at separating the two. Um, but that doesn't mean you couldn't have an incentive built in, like if you wanna lease a space, you know, we've got a unit that's tied to it, maybe it's right above it. And it's more lucrative that way and there's, you know, contractual things, lease things you can, you can craft into that. But funding dollars, uh, it's been my experience, it kinda gets stickier than you want it to be.
And if, if the town wants to get creative with it, um, as well, the commercial really is the hard part, right? That Colin, if you know, your solution was sort of an availability, that would kinda open up all sorts of doors for this project to move forward. Because, you know, there's a lot of, um, institutional partners that need housing. I mean, Ben, you know all about it, right? So, so does a lot of people in the room. Um, so there are always those opportunities and, and that's kind of a, as opposed to being a, a true RO, resident occupied sort of restriction, which he was kind of advising against for funding reasons. If you are partnering with someone like Carbonell Arts or Raft or something like that, there is sort of an, uh, uh, an organic, you know, nature that that is gonna be supporting this, the same community and it's also good for carbon footprint, right? Cause they're living and working in the same town, so there's, there's abilities to get money there. So, but those institutions can help fund the project, uh, but the commercial's the hard part to get over.
Well, let's go there. Ross, you had a question about commercial and we paused it, um, but it feels like we have support for moving forward with a ownership model on the Southwest Promenade, continuing to put the capital stack together for the Sixth Street, um, low-income project. And, um, Ross, where did you wanna start with commercial?
Are we, are we, are we calling commercial anything that isn't residential? Basically at this point, not, not necessarily retail, retail. Or, I guess I'm a little confused, I mean, cause I, and I'd heard, I, I am aware of the, of the, the Carbonell Arts sort of commitment or agreement. Um, is that for the entirety of that, that promenade?
No, um, so the short answer is from a, a tax credit application perspective, the commercial was leasable space that is not residential.
Okay.
That was segregated. We did not specify whether it was, you know, retail or an office or whatever. From that perspective, it's commercial. We had other non-residential spaces that support the residential, like community space and, you know, amenity spaces and things like that. Those essentially from our side of the ledger are residential spaces, right? When we're talking about commercial here, I think the shorthand we're using is addressing the code requirement that the, the at-grade development along the promenade be commercial in nature. And, you know, that to me means it's not residential. And it could be a variety of different uses. I know there's a desire for it to be certain kind of commercial users, um, you know, that are activating the promenade, et cetera. Um, so I think we wanna be maybe a little tighter on when we say commercial versus, you know, retail. But really the short answer is first floor, non-housing units, housing above by code. And Ramsey could probably speak more eloquently to what the code requires, but that's essentially what we're saying. We can't put housing units on the ground floor. Maybe there's stairwells and support space related to it and you're going up. But that frontage is intended to be activated facing the promenade in a non-residential, commercial, retail, business-type, uh, use.
And we haven't, we haven't ruled in or out anything for those spaces other than, I'm, in terms of what, what that commercial could be.
Nothing beyond what was in the shreds you were a part of.
Right.
Identify what ideal spaces would work there, what sort of institutions, what kind of functions that would help, help activate that space and make it a vibrant core. And then of course, we, we sort of identified in that shred process, which we brought to this group, that Sixth Street could be sort of an opportunity to actually bring some of that residential to the ground. But the promenade is the sacred sort of heart of Carbondale where we're trying to keep it, um, activated in sort of a public way that, uh, has shops and restaurants and art studios, et cetera.
Yep. I mean, I could, I could see that being even, I, I guess, you know, on one, on one, on one level, we see that as a sort of in, intrinsically as a, as a sort of selling local art, you know, that's sort of, sort of the default. And I, and I don't know that that brings as much vibrancy as people sometimes hope for. Um, and, and I think at some point along the lines, I know during the shreds, and I, I, I didn't want to rule out the possibility of, of something that's more commercially commercial. I mean, if we had Bristol Cone or, you know, bike shops or, or something like that, that's, that's a little bit more, you know, gets more folks in and out the door on a daily basis. I think that, that starts to really activate that, that spot.
Yeah.
And there's something to be said, something to be said for not ruling out those things and maybe even contributes a little bit from a tax-based perspective.
So I completely agree that those are the kind of activations that are envisioned and it's, I, I mean, it's ideal for the promenade being, you know, pedestrian, bringing folks out, all those things. But it really kinda gets back to the, the practical hardships that presents from a development standpoint. It's like, okay, if you don't know who that tenant is, it's spec-built and it's spec-built. Who's paying for it? What if no one moves in, sir? And that creates a hardship from a financing standpoint to say, well, you need that first floor and the structure to go up for the housing is the easy part. I mean, to get people behind, I mean, the funding's there. It's hard to get the funding, but that, that's easy to understand. But the, the commercial operations, that's a harder piece. And of course, no one wants to see vacant commercial. Uh, and so it becomes this balancing act of like, if, if it must be there, okay, let's find the dollars or find the user who will bring the dollars. Or find someone who's willing to fund it and speculate so we can get the housing above. And, you know, didn't wanna go, you know, frankly, we do a lot of things, but we, Art Space is not in the business of speculating on, you know, ten, fifteen thousand square feet of commercial. No offense, but you know, in a rural mountain community, hoping that there's a user and that they're a long-term stable user. So finding carpet, uh, the initial application we did with, you know, two thousand square feet, I would do that all day long in any kind of project. That's a small enough component that if, if that went on lease going in, you know, we could find, you can find users and cleave that up into smaller spaces. You'll find enough people there. It really just, you know, came together nicely that Carbonell Arts had a desire. And we were able to, you know, ink a soft agreement with them that if you build this thing, they would intend to lease it. Wonderful. That solved a problem that I was already frankly, you know, okay with. Like, we can cover two thousand square feet. When you go broader than that and you need all of it to go vertical, that's I think been the pause on the east side of the promenade. But again, as I was just describing, if we want to look more broadly at this homeownership component. Now, if we're just talking about a couple of those pieces, you know, I'll put them in the numbers, we'll figure it out. But I think if you're solving for smaller components at a time, it makes it less onerous to say the whole promenade needs to be activated. And then that, that commercial piece at first floor is also part of north of the Thunder River Theater, like that's intended to be commercial maybe.
What, what's this, what's this, what's the square footage of the Southwest Promenade, commercial space?
Uh, it was about two thousand square feet.
That's it, total. And, 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 and that is that, that entire space is earmarked for?
I don't think we have a great, well, so here's, it was.
I'm, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to, to rule out Carbonell Arts, but.
No, no, so.
Just to be clear.
As Tron, um, you know, so it kinda steps like this. There's I think six doors that actually showed in it.
Yeah.
But it was the entirety of that bay, it was about two thousand square feet total. Uh, but again, as we drew it, it's like, either if they change over time or they need less space, you could throw a wall in there and they're divisible. A lot of this kind of, uh, mixed-use development art space has done in the past, like, we'll put, you know, some modest square footage. A lot of buildings that we do have commercial frontage on a, you know, on a main thoroughfare or it's zoned commercially, we're doing residential above. If you can carve up into smaller pieces, you can find someone who can lease five hundred, you know, square feet a month. That's easier to do. Uh, but when you have the entirety of that strip, it becomes a bigger thing to bite off. But that was about two thousand square.
Okay.
Okay, I wanna let Christina.
And on the commercial part, are you thinking of common, um, kinda minimizing some of that commercial space? I mean, I know in Aspen, to save small businesses, there's a building where they have common, common minimized, uh, two hundred square feet business.
Yeah, so admittedly haven't gone too far into the details of like how those proposed condominium units would look here on the Southwest Promenade. But my expectation would be you would have essentially like a condominium owner that has, probably owns the land and is responsible, like your HOA would be for your, you know, Shell and Core and, you know, those sorts of things. The, the stairwells commonly owned, the units themselves, individual condominium units that are either rented or sold outright. And also making the commercial a separate condominium unit for legal reasons. You don't want that owned by everyone because it's part of the HOA. Uh, like if it's owned by the HOA, then all the residents or the owners of the other units have responsibility for it. Versus if it's cleaved off and owned separately, that would be my initial gut, but I would wanna look into that a little more closely. But that also allows, it could be sold. It could be leased or it could be sold. But it, it also, it starts to separate, you know, the liability of like, when you buy a home, you don't wanna be responsible if your neighbor next door doesn't pay their taxes. You don't wanna be responsible of the commercial unit that you technically own through an HOA, you know, goes kaput. So that would be my initial gut, but we'd look at, you know, models and make sure that there's a thoughtful way of addressing that.
Okay, Chris did just.
Sorry, I've got some.
I appreciate it.
Uh, I guess is there a model where, you know, I, um, we try to identify, instead of building a spec project, maybe even from the housing side as well, we open up, you know, our requests for qualifications, I guess I would say, and try to assemble a list of, A, maybe your waiting list of people who want uh, buy a housing unit and then maybe also a list of people who are interested in being, uh, owning a commercial space conceivably on the ground floor. And then, I mean, potentially if you have enough interest and you can say, we've got, you know, these five people. When you have three spaces, we've got five people, if two of them drop out, we've got two more people. We can stress test their finances or whatever ahead of time and then maybe conceivably you have sort of, it's like the project's pre-sold essentially before you have even started building it. I don't know if you.
Yeah, some of that, yeah, I was just gonna say, so Amy Camilla is in the room. She had, she's been doing some of that sort of, you know, on-the-ground work to identify potential commercial users. Um, so yes, I mean, that would be part of, you know, the work we do is like, even, even without looking formally at developing phase two, we're trying to, you know, generate some of that interest and, and build some depth there. So that would continue and I think either from for-sale or rental model. Um, but again, part of you started, you know, you, you mentioned stress testing. That becomes part of the genesis too of like, okay, now you have someone who's interested. Are they gonna fund it? Well, now, no, actually we have to develop it and assume they're going to lease it. And again, from a funder standpoint, they don't care about that tenant. They wanna know that the dollars are there they want. So those are some of the things you gotta work through, but it, it's doable. Uh, I think again, just like at the scale, we're talking about the volume of square footage, it was a little bit onerous. But I would welcome, you know, if there's either commercial developers or, uh, you know, business or businesses that want to occupy or have that space, we'd welcome it. We just, we're focused on sort of the Sixth Street in the, in Southwest initially, but absolutely, we're thinking that that's gonna be part of it going forward.
Thanks, Ramsey. Um, I just have a couple of questions about topics we haven't touched on. Um, one is I just wanna make sure that the whole board is fully aware of what thirty to sixty percent AMI, like what that is. And I wanna, I wanna understand from Art Space's perspective, that those AMI ranges don't just meet the goals of CHAFA. Cause that's what's really forced us into that, that low of a range, but that.
Super low.
Yeah, it's super low, but that the, um, the creative class, the creative community that we've envisioned and the reason that we chose Art Space for this project was to make this not just a low-income housing project, which is super important. And we have like Red Hill Lofts and, you know, there are others. Um, but to make it a place where the people who are getting pushed out of Carbondale who make it what it is, you know, that kind of folks and that are creative and productive and all that can live. So I just wanna make, make it clear, thirty percent AMI for Garfield County, twenty twenty-four, one person is twenty-one thousand dollars a year. And sixty percent is forty-three thousand dollars. So that's super low, right? And for a family of like, say, three, say a single parent, two kids living in one of the two or three-bedroom units. That would be twenty-seven thousand dollars at thirty percent or fifty-five thousand dollars at sixty percent. So I wanna make sure we know what we're getting into, because what's gonna happen if we're successful here is we get this built and then there's this outcry that everybody makes too much money to live there. Probably everybody that you might know and interact with. Like this is a very, very low-income project and. And we're kind of going all in on that. And it's shifted over time, like it started out, we wanted all these other kind of middle income and all that. And like I say, that's a very important thing to do to build housing for people very low on the income scale. I want us to know that that's what we're doing here and I want some assurance from art space that those are the income ranges that you see in other mountain communities. That, yeah, that's this vibrant creative space. It's not just like concentrated poverty.
Yeah, so a couple of things there. Um, one, on those thirty percent units, those are very low. And part of that was meeting the Chaffa thresholds for an application. If we had ten percent of units at or below thirty percent AMI, it aided us in meeting that threshold. And by electing to do that with the Garfield County, um, rental subsidy support, gave a lot of assurance that the, the rental of those units is going to be much more feasible in the income address. Those are going to have to come off a waitlist. There's probably not as much of focus on marketing to creatives in that regard. The sixty percent piece was trying to maximize rents underneath the twenty percent of units we've cleaved off. That would go above that to one fifty, but that created this other problem with Chaffa about mixing the two. What I would strongly suggest as we continue to model this forward is that we don't go just sixteen, just thirty, but we'll be looking, if it's tax credit, to get up as high as we can. So up to that eighty percent range, because I, I absolutely agree that that becomes a tough window to fit in. If you're making, you know, that level of income, I mean, the likelihood you're actually already living here and surviving until the point of this is, you know, um, open and available. It's probably unlikely and those are people maybe coming from elsewhere. And I think that doesn't necessarily address the needs that are present here. So in a lot of ways, I think the Lytech piece puts us in the tightest box. Looking at some of the other components, particularly, you know, if there's homeownership models over looking at a higher AMI. Gets to the, that, you know, viability of the folks who can actually afford and are here and would want to avail themselves of affordable housing. It gets to that income man, but it puts us outside of that, that tax credit piece. Um, which has really been a component of, oh, I'm looking at this. So the tax credit one's going to be the hardest nut to crack. And that's why we're always wanting to push the income limits higher so that we can have that broader net. Um, but that will require some of those units also being at those lower rents that we, we hit that qualification. So that'll be somewhat of a thread, but the market study that we did in advance of that tax credit application did identify sufficient households. In the, the market area, which is essentially, you know, the valley up to, um, essentially just shy of, um, uh, Glenwood. So it didn't need to sort of go beyond the, the mountain ranges. There was sufficient, um, demand identified to, to fill those units. Uh, so, you know, that provides this, you know, objective look at it, but it, you know, it's a concern I have. Um, particularly as we see inflation and things, those income bands become tighter and tighter and harder. So that would be something we'll want to look at very closely.
Okay, lots of hands up. Let's start over here in Georgia.
I'm, I'm clear on these income limits. I don't think that, I don't think that the public is clear. And what I'm confused about is like. At this point, can we say this doesn't work for Carbondale?
I mean, we have, we have no project right now. We just.
We don't have an application.
Yeah, we have drawings on paper.
But. What I'm hearing is that that's not where this board is headed either. I mean, I, I have heard a lot from public when I tell them that this is a low income housing. And what those income limits are, and everybody is sort of shocked. So I have concerns about that, but I, coming into this process. Where we are, I, I kind of want to know like, how much money has Carbondale put into this process? And how much have we spent on the design and how far into it are we with art space? And are we at a spot where, where it would even make sense for us to say, hold up, this doesn't make sense.
Jess, I don't feel like we're there. I just think, um, eyes wide open on if we give direction to Andrew tonight to come back with us, to us with another capital stack proposal. I mean, when I heard thirty to sixty percent, that was the lowest numbers that I had heard. And so, um, originally we were trying to kind of have it all. And we were trying to combine the Sixth Street and the Southwest Promenade to get all the way up to like hundred and fifty percent AMI. And then it seems like this nice spectrum, but now as we carve off that Sixth Street portion and make it just very low income. Um, I'm less comfortable with that, but I don't know where the financing comes from if we bail on that. So Erica.
Well, and I also, um, I think it's easy for, uh, maybe our peers or my peers to assume that nobody makes those wages. But then you go to City Market and you see what they pay people. And, you know, they're advertising and it's starting wage eighteen bucks an hour. So that is thirty six thousand a year. And that might not be that thirty percent, but as soon if that's a single parent of some kind of one or two kids. Then they are qualifying for this housing. And I've been, well, no, I was going to say this, no matter what comment you made, um, was I just think we just need to keep that in mind. Cause from the beginning, I've been super, I mean, when I first got elected, I had three single parents contact me and say, I cannot find housing. And I knew where they worked, I knew about what they made, and they are right in this income bracket in that thirty to sixty percent range. So to me, I do think that there will be people, and we studied it, who qualify for this housing. And but that is why, and we've thought that from the beginning, but we've know there's other folks who also need housing. So that's why we've been trying to like look expansively. But part of it is, um, we're not going to come up with thirty four million dollars to do the whole project on our own. Um, I mean, unless, I don't even know what we could bond, unless we went to, we went and taxed our residents, then we could do it. Right. But, um, so I just think I, whenever I look at those, it's really easy. And after running a low income, you know, efficiency program and getting that up and running, it's really easy to look at the one person in that income. But once you start thinking of families, um, it's amazing how many people qualify. And having helped get the, the program, we just heard about a DCE up and running, there was a lot of people in Carbondale who qualified for those programs. So I don't think we should rule out that they don't exist. I think just making sure that folks know we're doing both. Um, and I do think that's where the ownership component can be really strong in this new kind of strategy going forward is that we could potentially take care of both. Make a small dent in it, but.
Let me hear from everybody and then Lauren will come back around. Go ahead, Colin.
Um, you both made great points. Um, I think our challenge is that we're, we're kind of in the middle of understanding what we're trying to do. And we, we went in all in on the Lytech effort and we've learned that that's not going to work. We have to take a different approach. And I think, uh, over this next few months, we're going to learn a lot about the homeownership option. The Lytech op, proposal, I mean, we're not putting it in right now, right? We don't, we don't even know yet. And that whole range is going to change now because it was connected to something else. So I think, um, there's a lot of unanswered questions related to this, that the key challenge that we face as a community is financing it. Yeah, so it's just weighing the, the opportunities and challenges of the strings attached to all this funding. And hopefully with arts based help, we can get as close to where we want to be as possible, knowing that it's never going to be perfect. And this isn't going to solve all our affordable housing issues. This is hopefully the biggest thing we've done, but it's the beginning of doing some other projects in the future as much as we can. But we, we're not quite there yet. But you, you raise a great point. People don't quite understand this. What about me? And we're trying, but it's, you know, unless people are willing to tax themselves as high as possible, so then we have total control. Uh, I don't think we're going to get there. So we need to, we need to be creative and figure out how we can slice and dice this. Chris.
Um, I just think that Jess, this, this discussion is, seems to me pushes the argument to, to, to maybe more seriously consider that. Southeast across the promenade as well to, to, to at least maybe poke in, poke at that a little bit of like, what is the. Can we bite off a little bit more on the other side of the equation conceivably? And just from, looking at it from a practical standpoint, it starts to feel a lot more logical to me of like paint from the inside corner out. And you've got for as a construct, as a contractor, I can imagine it'd be nice to have that whole Lytech lot to stage out of. And not have built all this other crap and then be trying to work out of that alley, finish your last project on the inside, in, inside corner. So I think there's a, there's like a logical argument to that, but there's also maybe an argument there about, um, about, yeah, trying to balance the thing more evenly from the get-go. I, I think I still am committed to, I think the Lytech feels like sort of the right proportion to me for this project. Um, and I think there is use to having a lot of, to being able to, I mean, I think those are, could be employees for all kinds of businesses conceivably in town and so.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Lauren.
I just wanted, um, Andrew to clarify something because what I was hearing.
Okay.
Thought that there might be something else about the, the averaging of the AMIs.
Yeah, um, and I'm, I'm glad she mentioned that because that was a point I wanted to clarify. This goes back many months now, but as you might recall, our initial thought at, um, the application to Chaffa was we would go in. At income averaging, which would allow us to go up to eighty percent AMI. And, uh, in that initial application LOI was informed by Chaffa that they do not allow for that if you also have unrestricted units. And so the conversation we had and the direction we went was if we wanted to have those unrestricted units that go up to one fifty, we would then have to bring the rest of the project down to a max of sixty. And then those thirty percent units we brought in with the section eight, uh, support. What I would keep on the table here, and I think would be mo- most advantageous is when we look at a Lytech development, again, presumably on Sixth Street. Would not have these unrestricted higher income units that would put us back in that up to eighty percent.
Okay.
Um, income band, some would still have to be lower because on average, the project must be serving sixty percent. But that could be, uh, you know, a handful at eighty, some at sixty, maybe a couple at forty, they don't have to go all the way down to thirty. Because in aggregate, they'll look at, uh, the, the affordability delivered at, at, at being sixty percent collectively.
Okay.
Absolutely. That's what I would look at because it, it wasn't available to us before, but that would be back on the table.
That sounds, that sounds more reasonable. And I think as Chris said, if we're also looking at the Southwest and Southeast Promenade. Um, as those are really your higher income, Eric, those are eighty percent and up essentially in some ownership opportunities and some opportunities for large employers like the town to buy some units and lease them to our staff. Then it starts to feel more like, more representative of the whole population. It's just when we look at this in isolation and if it was only thirty to sixty percent, and if that's all we got done for the next five or more years. Um, I think people would, would feel like we missed the target.
I just also want to point out that if we are looking at holding off on going back to Chaffa for the next year, and we're not doing that until twenty twenty six. We could essentially put this parking conversation back on the table. Because by the time we go back to Chaffa, we may have resolved this parking issue and then we get more units. So that's one benefit to having this time.
Hmm. And, and you're saying that you can go back to Chaffa anytime with the, the four percent.
Yeah, um, yes, if you go states and fours, it's in like August. The four percent tax credit is available, but that requires bringing the, the, uh, taxes and bond piece in it. And that, that, there's always a yes, but it, you know, but, um, so four percent you can apply anytime of the year. Uh, we just did a four percent project that's under construction in Colorado Springs. The county there had sufficient bond capacity to issue the bonds for that project. Absolutely something we can continue to look at here, uh, but that would allow an opportunity to apply at any time of the year. Doesn't change the, the need to secure gap sources, which we want to, you know, uh, continue to pursue either way.
Okay.
But.
All right. I feel like we need to move on, Lauren.
Just wanted to add, based on our conversations this morning, um, Ben, uh, and I don't remember who said this, maybe it was Jess. Um, currently we have four hundred thousand dollars into this partnership and pre-development funded. We have another two hundred and fifty thousand on, um, on deck, so to speak. Uh, that we are obligated for as part of our pre-development contract, but we do not owe it until we are farther along with the financing. Um, we have also, uh, for those of you who weren't here, as part of this Chaffa application. A letter went from the town to Art Space committing, uh, approximately a million dollars towards, um, getting some housing units. There was no discussion of exactly what that would look like, but just that the town was committed to gaining some of those units for use for employees. Um, and also I just wanted to let you know that. On this, um, this issue, one of the things that I'm doing is I have, um. A couple of people putting together a trifold brochure, almost like a prospectus, because there are some other developers in the valley. Um, and in the area that have expressed interest in potentially being an additional partner with Art Space and the town. Um, to get some of these other, um, parts of phase two potentially, um. Going so that this property is not under construction for the next twenty years.
Okay, thanks.
So, um, I, I'll keep you posted on that, but it's really just preliminary conversations.
Thank you. I feel I need to move us on. It's been a really good in-depth conversation. We've been talking about this for a little over an hour and a half. And I think it's good because now we're, we're familiar with it. We've had our questions answered. Andrew, I'll just ask you, um, what do you feel like are your takeaways from our discussion tonight? Cause I don't feel like we've said, go do this. Um, and what, what are we going to hear back next? What's that timeline look like?
Yeah, so wh- what I'm hearing is there's absolutely, um, some direction to put some more meat on this concept of homeownership. And, you know, how large or small that can be, identify what we, uh, might have available for applications and bring those forward. I would love to be in a position to take those applications in, in, you know, the first middle part of next year to Dole. And I, I can, uh, put some dates to that and do some digging into those applications. I think realistically, um, probably by, you know, end of December, I'll want to have my hands wrapped around that. And depending on when the application windows open up, I'd want to be back in front of you guys, I think, you know, early part of the year, depending on when some of those windows might be. Just to ensure like, here's where we think we are and this, this is what I would like to apply for, just to make sure we're on the same page. Again, the bulk of that being sources already known timelines that are coming for homeownership opportunities. In parallel to that, um, I can do some more modeling on, you know, what is a, you know, standalone Sixth Street? If it's, you know, up to eighty percent AMI, put some numbers to that and look at what gap there is. You know, the total gap was around nine, ten million dollars for the entire thing before. It's going to be somewhat smaller. If it's just a Sixth Street piece, but there's still the obstruction bit. So there's a little bit of horse trading there, but I can do that modeling, come back and say, here's what I think we need to chase. And, you know, I talk pretty regularly with Lauren about what I think we need to come back with. And I think the series of what those applications may be and what we want to target could also be part of that, that update. But I think again, probably after the first of the year would make most sense to have something meaningful to talk through.
Okay.
If that sounds okay.
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. All right. Well, thanks for all your work on this and, um, yeah, we look forward to next steps.
Well, and I'll just say, you know, thank you for the robust conversation. I always appreciate, um, the frank direction and, you know, opinions and, and guidance shared here. So I'll hopefully have something, you know, we're going to go next time, but no promises. So I'll leave you to your agenda. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to see you all.
Let's take about a five minute break and then we'll talk about our last item, which hopefully shouldn't take too long. We'll see.
Now you. How many days?
And that's time and that's a need because we know that we.
We have a lot more flexibility in this iteration than we did in the last one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what's your deal?
Oh.
Yeah, I think if we could get thirty to eighty percent on Sixth Street.
Yeah. That'd be pretty spectacular. Yeah.
That's a, that's a good project.
Yeah, the, the challenge will be the commercials.
So, yeah, and that's why it's never been developed in twenty years.
Yes.
That's the whole line, right?
Parking.
Yeah.
We have a phenomenal.
You should find some bigger trees to shake. This last item was really a request from board members at our retreat that we wanted to just talk about our protocols. So I just spent some time a week or so ago and put together this memo and really made it first, just do we want to update our process for adding items to the agenda, which as long as I've been on the board has been sort of. If you want to add something on the agenda, then it's on you to convince two of your fellow board members, you know, either inside or outside the meeting, that this is a subject worth our time. And if you can't do that, it doesn't go on the agenda and that's worked well for us so far. But certainly open to discussion and change there if there's problems with that. Public comment mentioned in the memo that that's also worked well for the most part. But I had never run a meeting that I felt like I had less control of in my life than when we had the Gaza ceasefire stuff. And the control that I wanted was not to stifle the discussion, but the ability to say, we're not going to talk about this for three hours. I needed to be able to put some kind of limit to get our core business done and to limit the number of people that were coming in on Zoom from out of the area. And I had I had nothing to fall back on to say like, we're gonna, we're gonna focus on certain things. So I would encourage us to update something there. And then questions came up after the sexual assault about when trustees are notified about things. We can talk about that. And then if there's anything else. So with that, maybe we'll just start with adding items to the agenda. Anybody have any concerns or want to discuss updating the current practice?
Yeah, sure. So I think, yeah, I I mean, my thought on this one is sort of that. Well, one, right now, we don't, I think we need to codify. First of all, we need we need to codify it because because it's not, it's not codified. And I think someone could, any, any, anyone could say, hey, look at the look, look at the the rules. I wanted this on the agenda and that's what it says. And you you did a great job pulling that out of there and I'd seen that prior. And so I think it shouldn't be something that's that's just sort of assumed or acknowledged because I think there's no, there's no leg, legal leg to stand on there, kind of. At the same time, I would, I would suppose that that if we had two people, that's great and that that should be reasonable. I think otherwise you end up, if you're trying to get three, three people to put an agenda, agenda on, item on there, you can turn into a game of of telephone, kind of talking to this guy, talking to that guy, this lady and that, you know, trying to, trying to get when you can't meet together as three people. And so, you know, I I don't have too many concerns that we couldn't just bring debate to a close somehow or another. I I think this is actually a pretty big deal to kind of figure out. And and I think it also then goes to to sort of on some levels, this is, this is a bigger, bigger can of worms, but sort of redefining kind of the mayoral role and just codifying it. I think you're doing a great job. And I, and and I think, and probably ought to be paid more. But at the same time, we also, like, if if the if the mayor is the the chief conduit, the chief conduit of of information or the chief, you know, consultant with the the town manager, let's, let's codify that. And that, and I, I don't think I'd have any problem with that. Because at this point, it's not just we need two men, it's, it's, it's that trustees need to get three other trustees. But the mayor could put anything, the way it's working now, the mayor could put anything on the counter, on the agenda. And so there's a little bit of someone, of of the mayor being more equal than others. And and I think that leads to a little bit, it can lead to a little bit of confusion from trustees. I can only speak to sort of the, at this point, when I was an outsider, but sort of the efforts to try to get comment with the Forest Service building. And ultimately, there was never an opportunity for the community to to put their piece together other than in two-minute increments. And I think we had two people on the board willing to provide, provide and on an opportunity for that and and couldn't get three, you know, and in hindsight, that that really wasn't even a rule. And so, so I think, I think there's a big can of worms there. I I just think it's important that we codify things. And I think there are ways, ways to do that. Yeah, no, no, like, no big beef, other than just wanting to know what the, like, having some, having a little bit more structure there. And I think, I think if two, two trustees are willing to kind of get down, sit down, work together to kind of put together a memo, you know, which they can do and three can't, you'd actually end up with a better proposal for for putting something on the agenda.
Okay, thanks Ross. Other thoughts?
I I also think that two is, I was thinking the same thing, that getting three people is hard because it creates this problem where like, am I polling? Am I calling people and I don't know, it feels a lot like breaking the meeting rule to me. So I sort of like the idea of having it be two. I, I think I disagree about codifying this stuff. I think that, I think as a board, we can put it in minutes that this is the way this board is going to run for however many years or until the next election cycle. Maybe we reevaluate it every two years where we get new members on. I just, I I'm leery of creating it in the code of the town.
I wonder, because it's in the charter, if it would actually require a charter amendment, which I think is a vote of the people. I'd have to look into that, but yeah. So then that's probably why it hasn't been codified. I think, I think the charter does say can be added. I'd never read that before until I did my research on this. Can be added by any trustee and there just were times when it's like one person's kind of pet issue. And it's like, if you can't convince one or two other people on the board that that issue ought to be on the agenda, it's probably not the best use of time and that the board found itself being very inefficient and pulled in a lot of different directions. That was before I was on. So I didn't experience that, but I guess that's why it hasn't been codified is because it's a charter.
I would, I would hesitate a little bit because I think as I, on increasing, going down to two. Because I feel like when the folks who were asking us to put the international peace debate on our agenda, we did have two trustees who were interested in adding it to our agenda. And I feel like that would have changed our entire summer and we would have not gotten anything done if we had started, you know, agendizing it. So I would just ask if we go down to two, that we, I don't want to put sideboards on it on the topic, but instead of deciding in that meeting with everybody asking us like, and two are like, yeah, let's agenda this. And then we're going to have a three-hour debate on something that we have zero control over. I'm not interested in that kind of stuff getting on our agenda. And so I would want to figure out a way that we can, like, if it is the two who say that, then they have to go and they have to come up with the who's going to speak and or something like that, you know. That would be my hesitation because I'm really grateful that that didn't get on our agenda this summer. So.
To your point, everybody brings up great points. I wonder if we can segregate them. So if it's in a public meeting and the public's asking us to do something, we keep it at three. Because that worked, at least not in your case, but it kind of worked. But if if Jess and I want to get something on the agenda and we talk about it and then bring it to the board and or to Ben, you, I would think that's a little different. It's trustee initiated as opposed to public initiated. So one suggestion would be we just change it slightly, make it easier for a trustee to or to to bring something to Ben and say, here, we'd like to bring this up, but when it's a on-the-spot kind of question, it's three.
I also think that I hear you that it could have taken up the whole summer. But if it had been added to the agenda as an agenda item, we might have been able to deal with it in a meeting and be done with it and they'd stop asking us to put it on the agenda. So like, maybe we caught, caused a bigger problem over the summer or before, when I don't remember the timeline, because I feel like it wasn't sitting here for very many of those meetings. That we could have addressed it head-on in an, in an agenda item, had the conversation in a public way and allowed for a certain amount of time because we can do that on an agenda item and and then dealt with it and then like, that's it, we're done. We're not going to listen to this anymore. So I see that point, but maybe we could have handled it. It could have been more beneficial to do it that way.
I agree. And that was, that was whatever it's worth. That was sort of my take is like, I, I did, I, I was willing to put it on the agenda. I don't, I didn't, I wasn't comfortable with sort of agenda access being, being sort of the way, the way things worked. And that if we might as, because then, because then no one, no one, no one has to say anything. I mean, if if we just sort of, if we don't deal with it and and don't go on the record really and and which is what we, what you do when you don't, kind of when you don't put it on the agenda. You know, there's, I'm not as comfortable with that. We, I think there were, there, in that particular case, we could have, we could have come to a pretty a pretty clear, like, this is not what we're going to. We hear you. You had your twenty-five minutes or something like that. And and then, and then, you know, I don't think any other, I don't think any of us would have said, yes, we want to put it on the agenda again. You know, I think, I think. Yeah, it's, it's interesting. It's really, it's, this is interesting stuff and it's sort of, there's an element of this that is, that is, what are we, how do we as trustees function? But also, like, the the bigger question is really, like, how does the public get something onto the agenda? And what, what is reasonable there and what does that, what does that entail? And I think, I think there were, there were, there were some missed opportunities just to have some more stuff out there regarding the Forest Service project, because I just using that as a case bait, as a, as a case that I was very much involved in. But, 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 you know, it was really frustrating to be amongst hundreds of people who just really wanted an opportunity to present concerns outside of two-minute you know, segments. And and I think to some extent, and I, maybe I misread my communications with trustees, but that that there were, that they thought that something that was going to be on, on, that they thought that was going to be on the agenda was that, but turned out to be more an opportunity just for a Forest Service person to kind of do things. And I think that's where some of the the preparation of that agenda item by multiple trustees might, might have some value. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's interesting stuff. I, you know.
I mean, those are the only two kind of recent examples I can even think of that have come up and don't relate much to town business. But prior to that, in the years, because this was in place when I came on board as a trustee, there wasn't, I don't think we had anything that we that didn't get on an agenda. I mean, we were even talking about rabbit regulations. And that got, you know, convinced three of us to get on there, like, to allow.
Rabbit.
Rabbits.
To allow more rabbits.
We talked about it. We spent a good number of hours on rabbits.
And nobody cared about rabbits anymore.
Is that what happened?
That is what happened. Was like, well, this feels pretty minor.
Well, I'm, many of you have been in this longer than I have, but I just feel like when you put it on an agenda, even in my past couple of months here, it still doesn't come off the agenda. I feel like, I mean, it would be ultimately nice if it would like say, okay, here you have your twenty-five minutes. But I just feel like it's government. It's easier said than done. I feel like if we would have brought in that international group on the agenda, I don't know if we could have easily taken off the agenda. Does that make sense? Because even in things that I've had to deal with in this, or we've had to deal with, sometimes it's fully not off the agenda. It keeps coming back. So that's my only hesitation with putting certain things on the agenda. I just feel like it's easier said than done that we could just push it away. I, I don't think it's easier said than done once we have it on the agenda. But that's just, you know, again.
I mean, I don't know, our town clerks or town manager, if you have any perspective on how other municipalities, I didn't ask you to research that. But how other municipalities deal with this, what gets added to the agenda, the role of the mayor, town manager and other board members?
So also, do you want to point out, I know you guys brought up the point in the code about that anything can be added to the agenda by the mayor or any member of the Board of Trustees. We have codified Robert's Rules of Order. And in Robert's Rules of Order, the mayor sets the agenda or the presiding officer sets the agenda. So we don't follow Robert's Rules of Order very closely, but I do want to point that out that Robert's because we've adopted Robert's Rules of Order, I think that's where it has been the mayor's agenda. And that's why the mayor sets the agenda. And I know a lot of other municipalities also adopted Robert's Rules of Order. That's kind of the standard way to conduct a meeting. And it has been in other municipalities, Patrick, tell me if I'm wrong. It is, has been the mayor's agenda and that he works, the mayor works with the town manager to set that agenda. So I think that is where it has come from. Ross, you talked about codifying a lot of duties for mayor and stuff like that while they're not specifically called out in our code because we've adopted Robert's rules, that's where some of those duties come from.
Seems like there's, that's great. Then actually that would, I'll take a look. Actually, I won't take a look at it. That sounds great. But the, but I guess, but then it would seem that there would maybe be a conflict there between what we said. What's what you, the line that you pulled out that said that any, any trust, you know, so there's a conflict. So so we might want to think about. And and to, I don't, I guess maybe codify is, I, I, I think there, I'm sure in Robert's Rules of Order, maybe I do need to read it, but there are ways to kind of set rules for the session or rules for the
Robert's Rules of Order.
That's, that is it, period. Or bobs, yeah.
Well, and we could have like a shortlist, shorthand list for us and then for the public too. To just help folks understand as we make this change that like, hey, if you want us to add something on agenda, you have to convince two trustees. You know, I think it would be helpful to make that kind of public information, even as people are sitting here, like.
I want to clarify that I still like the idea of splitting the rule that when the public is standing here, we still need three people here at the table when we're put on the spot to put it on the agenda. I like that that's three. Because then if I want it to be, if I, if I later want it to be on an agenda, I can come to, I can go pick one of you and convince one of you and not face this meeting issue and the polling issue.
And make it more thoughtful of like, here's what we would put on the agenda. Here's what the discussion would be. I think that would be great.
I, I like the idea of I I like the idea of keeping it separate with separate rules.
It sounds like we have a proposal. We can't make any formal decisions tonight, but this probably won't be formal anyway. It's just our way of operating.
And we'll be written down.
I think the idea of whether it's in the minutes or whether we even have a resolution at an upcoming meeting that says this board, you know, agrees to this rule like because I couldn't find it anywhere in writing. So it sounds like the proposal right now, I'll just see if this if we have some level of consensus on this is that. Somebody comes and says, I want you to add this to the agenda and we all look around and I say, does anybody support adding this to agenda? That's three. But outside of this, to avoid the conflict of three trustees meeting outside a. Outside of a public meeting, that it would be two.
I think that makes.
That sounds like a good compromise to me. Good thinking team. And I had never thought through the um. The limitations of the public meeting issue. I had always thought of it as like, yeah, I'll call one of you and say, do you want to add it? Okay, I'll call another one of you. Okay. But you're right that that's like a serial meeting and polling and all those things that we're not supposed to do. So. Good call. And I will just clarify too, just for our kind of working relationship, like the two things that I. Will continue to say, please don't put these on our agenda are things where we clearly lack jurisdiction. Which both the Forest Service building and the Gaza ceasefire resolution fall fell under that. Or things that I think are just kind of a waste of time, like how many rabbits should you have? Should you have cats have to have leashes? That was the one that sparked the three trustee rule under. Proceeding boards. So. You know, if you're gonna do that, we're gonna do this, like, let's do it responsibly. And I know that there will be some issue that's outsider jurisdiction that people will want us to. Spend time on and you know. Sometimes, yeah, we could say that we act as the forum for all views in our town, but I think like. I don't go to a county commission meeting and expect them to put like my big issue that I'm all fired up about on their agenda and spend time on it. So I don't. What's that? Yeah, I don't really know why people expect that of us. I don't think people expect the school board or Rafter or anybody else to put like. Kind of random international thing over here on their agenda, and I don't want them to expect that of us. And once we start doing that. Then we will play that role. And we do have limited time and, you know, unless we want to schedule. More meetings. That we're making choices, right? Every time that we put something on the agenda, we're deciding to talk about A instead of B. And I'd rather talk about stuff in our jurisdiction that is meaningful. So I if we can commit to that. Then I'm not worried about who can add items to the agenda. So I guess Jessica, Patrick, um, maybe if you guys talk about, is this a resolution or how do we kind of formalize that? And you got the gist there. Okay.
And I think we should add also prioritizing constituents of our town ahead of.
Yes, let's talk about that now. So that's a good segue into the public comment. Um, so go ahead, Chris, with that because that's the next item.
I mean, just I think we don't have to outlaw people from out of town talking, but I think if there's a. I think they should be at the bottom of the priority list for sure. And I don't know. Yeah, I I don't know about the like cutting off a certain amount of time. I'm open to. Any but but I think I do think there that's a good where you started to lay out seemed pretty good to me.
There's nothing. There's nothing to stop you from saying we will do twenty minutes of. Public comment and it's first come, first served. You better. You have to sign up. There's nothing to stop the board.
Sign up and we'll start with the people whose address, you know, the town clerk can look at the signup list. In town, in town. I mean, what about Stank? Right? Like, it's not in town.
By the rodeo when we're talking about the rodeo and those people don't live in town.
Right.
But they're impacted by town property.
Letting people talk.
A minute or two minutes or three minutes.
On that topic.
The rodeo.
Yeah. Yeah.
Strictly public comments. Someone shows up, I don't know the agenda. How are we prioritizing that and? What's the time on it there?
So it sounds like there's some support. Does anybody have? Comments with that of prioritizing? And I think we'll ask you all to draft us like a formal. Guidance here. But yeah, I like like your in town limits is first priority. You're otherwise in the area.
In greater.
Is probably second.
You're in eight one sixty three.
Anybody yeah, outside the area is bottom of the list. I mean, I would have liked to have not turned on the mic for anybody from Denver on Zoom.
And we had that, just so you guys know during when we were implementing different COVID regulations, we would end up, but we were all operating on Zoom. And so we would end up with people calling in and suddenly we'd be like midway through their comment and we're like, oh, my God, this is somebody from like. New York or whatever, you know, people were just like. Anyway, so we've had it. Yeah. And we were just learning how to run meetings on Zoom and getting all that figured out. But yeah, it was only that. I've only had a few or feel like we've had a few where people have suddenly they're like, calling from Boulder. I'm like, what are you doing?
Okay, so it sounds like we want to prioritize town residents and then other people from the area. What do we think about a limit? Like in my mind, a thirty minute limit and then it kicks to the end of the meeting? Like if anybody's so adamant that they want to wait till the end. We can add it back at the end. And and it's sort of as time allows. It's like if it's nine o'clock, I'm not staying. But if it's eight forty and we have twenty minutes left, okay.
We if is that how? And I think we just need to be clear that's how it is. Like you can fill up that space till nine.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I'm not going to commit to staying here till eleven thirty.
I think I think the time is on the agenda. It you list where the adjournment happens, what time the adjournment happens. And so if we get done before that adjournment time. We'll open up for more public comment. But I think if we're if we're over that time already. Why would we keep going?
And I think, I mean, it seems like if we just think through a circumstance where if we've got. Sixty people who want to be here and talk to us about something, it's most likely the same thing. And so maybe there's an opportunity where either they have to convince us to agenda, put it on an agenda or. Or we amend the agenda that night if we're like, okay, we do need to hear from these people. We're gonna let's can we do an hour?
How are we to do that?
But setting the expectation that it is thirty minutes and it's. Whatever. I can't remember now. Two minutes each.
Fifteen people?
Fifteen people.
Yeah.
That's pretty rare that we have fifteen.
I know.
Two minutes or three minutes?
We've done three, so it'd be ten people.
Okay.
But it says two minutes up here, but I've always done three. Two is pretty hard to.
Three feels like you can tell when somebody's reaching their three. Okay, we got it.
Okay. Does that sound good then? And you know, hopefully we won't use the thirty minutes most of the time. And I think for our town clerk's sake, I would not recommend putting a full thirty minutes on our agenda. Because then when we spend three minutes, everything's kind of out of whack and people are showing up late and their item has been moved up. So I think our general. Unless there's a hot issue, we kind of know when there's a hot issue. And then we say, okay, we're putting the full thirty minutes on. But otherwise it's ten or fifteen, whatever we normally have. And maybe we can formalize our sign in process a little bit. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I know that right now it can be hard because people are sitting out there, then the podium's there and the signup sheet's over here. So maybe you guys can talk about a way that's like. When you walk in, there's some way to just sign in. Up until the meeting starts. Yeah. And then it's like, we're gonna go down this list. You know, do you live in the town limits? Carbondale, what's your address? You know, that's we don't ask people to state their address anymore, but if we ask them to sign in with it. And then the clerk can prioritize those. And then if we still have time, okay, does anybody else want to speak that didn't sign up?
We our agenda diligent software does have the capability to have people sign up online before. Meeting. So that is an option that we can do. It's a public education piece, but. Open to using that we can. We have not been using it yet.
I guess I wouldn't want to make people do that because I think a lot of the time people, you know, this they they come in and they want to sign in in here. The school board does that and it's very formal and it really limits it, I think, probably too much. Like people show up for a meeting and then realize they can't talk because they didn't sign up ahead.
But I but it could be useful as a.
If we're.
First come, first served. There's your really first come issue.
Yeah. Yeah, I think having it as an option. I mean, if we can do both, like. Here's who signed up online. Here's who signed up in person. We still have a little bit of time. Does anyone else want to speak?
You prioritize based on the same like same criteria. If you live in town and you signed up online ahead of time.
Yeah.
You go first.
Yeah. It's nice to resolve this right now because it feels it's not a problem, right? Ninety nine percent of the time it's not a problem, but when it comes up, it's really hard to. Kind of spring into action. Okay, anything else on that one? Clerks, do y'all have a? Direction? Okay. Notification protocol. So this came up. Ross mentioned he would have liked to have been notified about the sexual assault case that happened. You know, kind of before hearing about it through social media. I think it can be hard to stay ahead of social media, but Lauren had notified me about that. I was out of town. It was Sunday afternoon at my brother's birthday and I was like, oh, my God, that's terrible. Let me know if you need me to do anything. I didn't think to then. Notify all of you. So there was no intention of like privacy there, but. I would say in general, there's there's things that Lauren tells me like in our, you know, weekly meetings, like there's things, you know, I want you to be aware of this, want you to be aware of that. You might hear about this, you might hear about that. And so. Knowing what the threshold is that the rest of the board would like us to be kind of thinking about for when you want to know about something, I think would be good to know.
I think so. The the struggle that I had with the sexual assault case was that I had people texting me on Sunday night. Saying, did you hear about this? And I was like. I didn't hear anything about it. And then I'm questioning the validity of it. Because there's misinformation going around. So. I don't know if it's a judgment call where like. If it's going to be of public interest where people are going to get. Fired up about it. I don't know how you make that call, but that was the that was the hard part for me was that then on Sunday night at eight o'clock. I'm getting texts from people in town on Wheel Circle saying like. What happened? And. Then on Monday. I'm struggling to figure out even at Monday morning, trying to figure out if it's real and what happened. So. I don't know. It just made it. It made it difficult for me to deal with. People bombarding me about what's going on. And I would have liked to have been able to say like. I don't have all the information. The police are working on a press release or whatever. And I ended up just. Calling Chief Wilson and being like, is this real? What do you want me to say to people? Because I didn't know what I was supposed to say. So.
I think, you know, clearly a tough situation all around. When it went that we were going to host a public meeting. I was like, well.
There we go.
Boy, I don't understand what where because I got a call. Can we have it at Third Street? No, we're sorry, we're full. That was all. No one told me this is why. And I really didn't know until you sent out a little note that it was about this. I'm like, oh gee, I didn't even know. So. I show up at the meeting. So I I mean, that's that's potentially one. I think assault in general is probably a pretty serious thing. We don't have a lot of assaults.
We have a lot of assaults.
Okay.
And and sexual assaults. Different circumstances. This was egregious.
Okay.
But generally. The people who have been assaulted do not. Do not want to talk about it. They do not tell their neighbors. And they are looking for complete privacy. That's number one. But. This was a very different situation because this particular victim. Told her neighbors. Before I found out about it. So. In general, police do not report sexual assaults to the public. But it's. Not unusual at all. This was a particularly egregious situation.
So I think if if we have to do something beyond normal police protocol. Which is we we're hosting a public meeting. We should at least know or have. A phone call or a standard text or something like that. That'd be really helpful because.
Yeah, I think.
People were saying, oh, there's a meeting this tonight. And I'm like, really? I don't know anything about it. So.
I think the minute that it's going public like that, it's like, I think the minute that it is about like. I found out in the morning that they were looking for a place for a public meeting. At that point, the trustees should probably know that they're looking for a place for a community meeting and that people are gonna. The community is coming together.
So that seems fairly clear that like if we're hosting a public meeting, we're going beyond normal protocol. I think what's challenging is like in a case like that, it's a good little case study. Where facts are moving quickly from. Different parties and then facts or or total non-facts being shared on social media and. What role we feel like police and staff have in sort of monitoring that and telling us before we hear about it another way. Because that, I mean, in your email, Ross, that's I think what you said was upsetting was that you heard about it on Facebook first. And I just want to be realistic with what we can expect. And you know, maybe we will. Yeah, hopefully we'll never see anything like this again, but it's interesting to hear that their sexual starts aren't as infrequent as we would like to think. And normally there's no notification. So how the police can monitor and know when to notify us, I I don't know that it's that clear. Christina, you had a thought?
I'm still a little confused and like when we send out an email to all the trustees on like when Ross sent that email out. Technically, isn't that a violation of the sunshine law? Like, okay, that's what I needed to know.
It becomes a discussion. Like if we decided to all start responding and having basically this discussion on email. Then it's a violation of public meetings. It's really when it's a back and forth discussion. That's kind of a meeting. But if we're just sending something out. Like and when I respond to people like I responded one today and copied you all, it's like you know that I've responded and then I'm cutting off the discussion. So that it it doesn't keep going.
So that's why when like somebody writes something, no, none of us really respond.
Exactly. I respond. That's part of my role.
Our response is if we do.
Yeah.
It's not a re reply all the time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and I could certainly if if the board wants me to, you know, when I just text. Usually I just text Ben and say, hey, be aware, this happened. Just want to make sure you're, you know, that you're you've been notified. It doesn't happen very often. I really generally do it if there's something that is. A real issue or some kind of. You know, threat or somebody saying something that could really cause a problem or it's police matter or what have you. I certainly could have. Sent a text to everybody, just done a group text and said, hey, heads up. This happened. The police are investigating. Just wanted to let you know. I'm happy to to change the way I do that.
That seems appropriate and it could even be just the trustee email, you know, that way it's easy.
That's I think that email is better than text. I know we're not on text or not on email as much, but it seems a lot more. Official and like I won't accidentally respond to the group text.
Well, we probably all got on our email like we saw the post and we were like, oh, I wonder if.
Yes, right.
Okay, I didn't.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
You say you saw it on Facebook. You saw.
No, I didn't see it on Facebook. Kurt called me, but it was on Facebook before I was even.
I random people, not not the police departments.
Random people.
Correct. I think, I mean, what rubbed me really the wrong way was sort of hearing that it seemed like after the meeting, the only continuing source of information was again on Facebook. Which to me is just the most viral and cesspool of rumor. And we have all these other outlets for telling people things that are one way channels that don't have this back. Splash of crap that comes out of it. And I just think the like Facebook is just like an awful platform to be. Trying to operate on. And I'm now I'm putting like the K D and K hat on. K D and K got completely left out of this. Nobody ever called them about any of it. And like, I think it goes back to like our whole talk about. Public communication and communication strategy and stuff like that.
Part of it is protecting the privacy of the victim.
But the community meeting was scheduled.
And then it.
And the community meeting was scheduled because what was happening.
I understand, but people didn't get notified of the community meeting except for on Facebook.
Yeah.
So I feel like the police departments and the towns Facebook pages should be secondary to an email blast that people have signed up for. That we're having a town meeting. Or that. I just feel like we keep begging people to sign up for the emails and sign up for our newsletters and sign up for these official notifications and then we don't actually. Use that. It it has happened since that town meeting. We have gotten press releases via email, but I think that. That kind of thing should happen in an email first and then blasted out on Facebook.
It's, I mean, I would say, I like we discussed afterwards, it's also an. An interesting micro study of how quickly misinformation spreads.
Yeah.
And then the amount of work that our police then had to devote to figuring doing this community meeting because they wanted to address all the misinformation.
And they didn't have a location until very close to the meeting. So they were trying to just push information out.
And just thinking through, and I'm sure staff, you know, this is a staff thing of just like, how. And just thinking through, and I'm sure staff, you know, this is a staff thing of just like, how do we, what's going to happen again? We're going to have other, some of sort of weird misinformation thing is going to happen. So that's almost like when we need to be alerted where it's like, okay, this rumor's going around that like. Public Works burnt down. It didn't, you know, whatever the next weird thing might, and I, I don't want to say weird, I don't want to dismiss the thing, but. It's, it just continues and it does continue. Every post about it is like. Full of vitriol and accusations. And it's like, whoa, nobody can just take a chill and just wait for information to come out. But um, so anyway, it's just, I think it's a reflection of what we're dealing with overall with communications and media. And we just got to experience it right upfront. So.
But I think where we've come to in this discussion, which is really productive is if Lauren's sending the mayor. A notification about something we might hear about that is, you know, a concern in the community, she'll just send that to the whole board of trustees via the trustee email instead.
I think that sounds good.
And then I think, continue to work with Anna on communication strategies. And it sounds like this board is saying like, let's de-emphasize social media and re-emphasize official channels. Um, to try to steer that conversation.
And at the very least, that should not be the sole source of the information. I shouldn't have to sign up to have somebody strip mine my data in order to get information about what's happening in town.
Well, like I deactivated.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't have even.
Yeah, I had no clue. I don't check Facebook. How do I get on Facebook?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't sign on to like DM, I mean, I guess de-emphasizes is fine, but like, there's no reason not to put a one-way. We have a Facebook, like the, the town had, and the town, the town and the police department specifically have Facebook operations. It is another way to get things out to a lot of people. And it, and there's no reason that we shouldn't, we shouldn't not do it.
I just think it should be secondary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It should be, or, or uh, at the same time as, you know, uh, as, as other, other sources. Yeah, for, for sure. I don't think we should not use something that exists despite its many, 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 many failings.
Okay. Any other topics then? We talked about um, adding IMC agenda and agreed three trustees for an in-person request to. Uh, outside of a meeting and work on it and lead that conversation and, and memo. And, and I want to just add there that. If, if you ever feel like I am being. Non-responsive in my role to board concerns and like dominating the agenda with, you know, my pet items, like tell me that. I hope you notice that like this agenda item is here because this board brought it at the uh, retreat. And like, well, Lauren and I have this list of all the things that we talked about at the retreat and we're systematically going through them. So I take that very seriously. But if there's something where I'm like, no, that's not, that's out of our jurisdiction, or I don't think it's very important, then that's when it would be. On, the onus would be on the trustee to, to build that support. So we got there, we got with public comment about a limit at the beginning of the meeting to thirty minutes, other comments at the end and prioritizing people who signed up. Allowing online sign up and in-person and prioritizing people in the room and notification would go to the whole board via email. Um, and not just to the mayor when there's some kind of big thing happening in the community. Anything else we want to talk about?
I just wanted to bring up. When we get an agenda and there's no memo with an agenda item, like today, the town center thing, it was just their presentation. And I think it would be really helpful if, even if it's just a short memo, that a memo comes with every agenda item. Because like, it would have been nice that we were, like just bullets, like we're talking, we might consider homeownership. Or we might consider taking, splitting these things off so that I can be better prepared when I get here to be like. These are the questions I want to ask so that I can be more efficient and we can do a better job addressing concerns.
Andrew and I had that conversation today when we got here because.
And it's happened.
Exactly.
It's happened with other stuff that ends up on our agenda where there's no memo. And I'm like, oh, okay, well, that, that's a nice presentation, but like.
Yeah.
What are we talking?
Firstly, when, when you get a good memo, you're like, sweet.
Yeah.
You know, like I.
And I feel really prepared and I know what the staff is recommending.
Yeah.
And like, I, I just, I would really, really like.
Make Kevin review everybody's memos. Kevin crushes it. Yeah, like when I read a Kevin memo, come in.
Jared crushes it too.
Jared crushes the memos.
And so.
Well, and every other one we've had from Andrew has been really good and has background. And I actually was like, oh, maybe it's missing. He's usually, he's usually super thorough in all of our past conversations. So.
And I know it's a pain. I've had to create them as a consultant, but like, it really makes a difference to have a good memo.
Yes, yes.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So are you wanting memos for even everything on consent?
No.
No.
No. Anything that we're going to discuss? No, not consent. Yes, yes.
It was the spark plug.
Well, and like liquor license ones. We don't need a memo.
No.
I appreciate this thing too, and you giving us a little preview at the end of the meeting is nice.
Yeah, no, for sure.
This is really helpful.
Things change, like our one for this month said we were going to have a P and Z update tonight and that got moved because of their agendas.
I, I love changes. I just want to have some sort of heads up.
Yeah. Any other topics for board kind of protocol?
It kind of, kind of just goes to the um, uh, future agenda items. We all received a email from, or not maybe all of us, but we did from Matt Gornick of Bike Ped.
Right.
Trying to push something on our agenda.
Right.
I don't know if you have any thoughts, but they, that group seems incredibly frustrated. I'm just wondering, is there a way we could get them on, get them thirty minutes so they can voice their concern? I'm really worried they're going to be so frustrated that we're going to lose people. And I, I don't, I don't quite understand why, but. I, that's just a suggestion to figure out, how can we move this forward? They seem to be like going in circles.
Well, I think their main thing is they just want to fire the consultant basically and. Uh, not give them any more money. I would say that's their main, it's like a little bit like vindictive or something, but uh, yeah, I just think they feel like they haven't been served very well by the consultant in general. But um.
Well, there, there seems to be frustration about waiting until January to start talking about the map process when. You know, it seems like the report's basically done. It's not perfect, but we're not going to get more out of them. So why not just let them present, present it to us so we can move on?
I mean, my understanding, I know staff has had some real concerns about this process and about the bike pet trails, um, interactions with the consultant in particular. Um, and the way that those meetings have been run and you know, there's the kind of, the way the dialogue has, has gone. And so what I've talked about with um, Kevin and Jared. Is just trying to get this thing across the finish line essentially, because it seems like Bike Pet Trails has gotten bogged down in it to a point where their, their goal is to criticize it. Rather than try to actually enhance it and, and refine it and say, okay, it's not perfect. It doesn't have these things that we wanted. But you know, staff believes strongly in my conversations with them that it, that the plan is good, that it does meet the requirements of the RFP. And that the other boards and commissions, I mean, we're going to get a, it's being reviewed by the environmental board, the planning and zoning commission. The um, Parks and Rec, staff, general public comments, the Bike Ped Trails, and finally us. So I want to be careful in a way that we don't amplify the negativity that's going on on that commission right now. So that's why my message to that chairman has been, here's your deadline, bring it to us one way or another. Um, because they've spent about two times the time that we initially allocated to it and, and almost two times the money. Um, and I'm just not really willing to entertain. Like all the things that they think are wrong with it right now. That's where I am with that. But it's complicated. And I think there's some really strong personalities that are part of it.
And is there, is there a way for us to think back about what didn't go well in that process? So like, why did we spend twice as much money?
I think it's the, I think it's that commission kept critiquing it and saying, bring it back, bring it back, bring it back.
Well, I don't know. I, I, I have, have very mixed feelings about this whole thing because I can see both sides of the, and I. So I'm sorry for sinking Mac, Matt on you a little bit of like telling him to talk, talk to you, but I did feel like he should at least maybe try to have a discussion about. Cause I mean, I, I see some of their argument is like, a lot of the time on this was the consultant sit, there was a lot of point where the, the bike ped. Made commentary or whatever, and then it was months of the consultant. And maybe they were talking to Kevin, but there wasn't anything coming back to the board. And then it's like, oh, we've been sitting here for three months. Aren't, isn't this going to be great when we get this plan? And then it comes out and it's like, oh, you changed page twenty-seven and page twenty-eight or whatever. And uh, it doesn't feel like that took three months to do all that. Um, so I think that's where some of the frustration came from. And then I think just some sense that, that like. I think it is just, it is just a really tricky thing because when you, like they did such a good job of doing community outreach that every intersection got. Commentary to the degree that it became difficult to actually. Sift through that. If you don't have any on-the-ground knowledge of like what, how to prioritize those things yourself. And without their ability to be here and check it out themselves, they were having to kind of triangulate a little bit. Without as much information maybe as they had need, needed. So, yeah, and, and then there are all of these buzzwords and concepts and things that are constantly floating through this world of. Vision zero and complete streets and uh. Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm drawing a blank, but there are like, you know, sort of like we had the net zero buzzword thing. And some people do sort of latch on sometimes to a buzzword or like a conceptual framework and they really want to see that thing in the plan. And I think that's where I come down with staff, on the staff side of it is more like, I don't really care about the buzzwords. We just want more of a Carbondale oriented thing. So I guess maybe they, I think, ah, yeah, I just, I, I don't really know where I end up on this, but I.
Answers my question where, where you have suggested, I just, I've heard from many people. So I just wanted to check in.
Yeah, and, and I guess there's going to be a lot of pressure on us just to sort of pass it. I think once it's gone through this. It's going to feel like when it gets to us, it's at the end of the process. So we should. We should put our stamp on it because it's gone through all these other commissions and stuff. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but the bike ped is going to feel like they, that was their last chance basically to do anything. Um, so.
Well, and just to clarify, I don't know if it's going to go on the agenda. I know for Parks and Rec, it's not good. I don't think it's going to be on their agenda. They were invited to attend the meeting um, at the beginning of this month, the Bike Pet Trails, and it was supposed to be an open meeting. But they weren't really given a chance to provide any comment after seeing the report. They were just asked to make comment at the beginning. And so I know the ones who attended felt like the chair didn't really open it up and allow for discussion. And we're, we're really frustrated that they had put all that time in to go and attend another meeting. So I think there's frustrations on different levels. It was kind of interesting hearing somebody say that. I was like, oh, okay. I'm sorry you went and were representing the Parks and Rec Commission and didn't get a chance to provide your input.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, it's been a tough process and these happen sometimes. I mean, we had our comp plan update got bogged down for a lot longer than we expected. And sometimes in my mind, you just got to say to the group that's deep in it, like, all right, you've given a lot of great feedback. It's a good plan. Let go of it. Let everybody else comment on it and then let's get it moving forward, start acting on it and then let's update it. Um, and I feel, that's just my feeling on this one. I don't know that we'll be able to get it to a point where the chair of the Bike Pet Trails Commission likes it. Unless it's got every single thing that he particularly thinks should be in it, but. Uh, anything else for the good of the order? It's nine oh five.
Um, just the only thing is, um, and I totally spaced it. I was going to talk about it last meeting when we actually had like time to talk about budget. I just didn't know if we were going to have like a little presentation from the downtowner about metrics and. I feel like it's in the budget, right, for next year? And it's sort of envisioned maybe as sort of an extension of the pilot, right at this point, I guess. It's not like we're buying your vehicles or anything.
Right. It's, I mean, it's going to be in the pilot phase, I'd say for really the first three years, which is when there's RAFTA funding. And then it kind of transitions to like, are we sticking with this? And, and we're trying to work on the RAFTA long-term plan. But, but yeah, that's a good one to.
Whether they're able to come or whether, I mean, they.
I don't oppose putting it on the agenda. I just, I think it's worth like having a check-in about it.
Yeah.
I was just going to say.
Recycle and.
And it could be in the new year. I don't know. It doesn't necessarily have to be a budget. We.
Yeah. We're not going to not pay for it at this point.
January is, like maybe we push it to January.
I, and.
Unless it's going to affect.
And I want to, I, and I really would love to see a pusher over the winter because that's, I think we might see a bump in downtowner use as it gets to be.
Right.
Um, and then I also, yeah, I mean, and I am excited about. I got sucked into some YouTube video about these buses that are little min, they're little squished mini buses basically, but they have like a fully ADA thing that. Comes out, but they, they're less than ten people, so it's not a commercial driver's license situation. And it seemed like there is plenty to explore there down the road in terms of like, what is? Keep, I'm, yeah, I'm excited to continue to talk about that model there.
Well, just one quick aside on ridership is, uh, we're higher than Basalt for downtown in September.
And that's sort of surprising because Basalt seems more disjointed than we are, but.
Right. I'd be on that all the time. I do think it'd be great if we could maybe put out an ad or let people know that we're continuing the service. Cause I have heard from some folks that are like, oh my God, I'm so worried. Are you guys going to, you know, is it in the budget? And so I just think letting the age-friendly community know, we put it in the budget. Um, people are, people love it.
But it is still ferociously expensive right now. We have to.
Yeah.
Uh, like per ride.
Yeah, it's like thirty bucks a ride.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's where even if you started charging for it and you could charge like five dollars a ride, it just doesn't even make a dent. It's not really worth doing because then it just decreases ridership and leaves you with more to pay. So that's why we have a first, last mile mobility subcommittee from RAFTA where we're trying to work. Yeah. Okay. Uh, thanks, everybody. So next week, no meeting. Next meeting is twelve, three. And I will be out of town from tomorrow until the day before that meeting. So pretty unresponsive. Uh, Singapore and.